Monster, Boom, Smog and Clean Water. Providing assistance to the RACVB for the development of the community entrance sign off of Highway 395. Monitoring staff assistance to exciting new startups funded through TAB grants. Negotiation of an Indian casino and entertainment complex, including a municipal services agreement and the proposed land sale agreement. Providing staff assistance and support to several small exciting businesses within the community. Sale of the city property within the former business park for approximately $755,000 with the residual or that amount that comes to the city to be placed in the city reserve fund. Also acting as technical staff for the former redevelopment, wind down and the sale of former RDA property assets. Preparation of two ROBS requests and providing the oversight board staff assistance. Providing staff support to legal counsel for the two ongoing lawsuits with the Department of Finance. Purchase for reuse the existing Walmart building to begin upon completion and opening of the new store with one new retail store already in place. And then the goals for next year, 2016, 17. Outreach and market to several new retail stores within the community to include but not limited to restaurants, hotels, entertainment venues, soft goods and auto supply, gas stations and general department stores. To bring into the community at least six new retail outlets in 2016, 17, thus increasing the sale tax income to the general fund. Outreach and marketing for recruitment of light and heavy industrial employers from outside the community to provide assistance and support for the retention, expansion of existing firms within the city, both retail and industrial. Continue to work with the city consultant HFH and CalRecycle for the management of solid waste services within the city with the goal of meeting all CalRecycle requirements. To aid other departments with potential funding and assistance in achieving their goals and objectives to bring two new employers industrial to the community. To implement a city assistance program to aid existing firms with the city with equipment purchases and location needs to enhance existing employee retention requirements. To provide oversight and management to the development of the Indian Casino and Entertainment Complex. To gather and provide community input into the NEPA process on behalf of the city for the Indian Casino and Entertainment Complex. Confirm and monitor the development of the project as it is planned and as it is promised. To act as technical staff for the continuing RDA wind down and to interact with the Department of Finance Oversight Board and Legal Counsel to develop next year's ROBS requests on behalf of the agency. To work with staff, counsel and bond counsel in the management of the correct uses of TAB funds and assist in the budgeting of TAB funds. To represent the city staff and several community working groups and committees. And then in terms of the TAB funds and the both the approved and proposed allocation for professional services which will be identified in the next slide. It was $191,000 with this year's approved budget. Proposed it'll be $151,000. Training and meetings for this current year is $27,006. That'll be reduced to $20,000. Advertising remains the same. Dues and publications have dropped $10,000 in the proposed budget. I can't quite read the total. I think it's $260,000 last year or current year and proposed at $203,000. In terms of professional services, the amount of that $151,000 is made up of our retail consultant Cosmont, our industrial consultant Wida, DHA consulting and then miscellaneous at $12,000. In terms of trainings and meetings, there's the ICSC conference, there's the NADA conference, there's the miscellaneous economic development meetings and conference attendance and then there's business development, travel to potential firms, a total of $20,000. Advertising is for literature folders, postcards, letterhead, business cards, email and webpage costs. Dues and publications, the current Economic Development Foundation, New Orleans Valley Economic Development Corporation, ICSC and GAVIA memberships. I didn't know we're a member of GAVIA because I'd like to attend some of those. Appropriations and expenditure summary. This is just a repeat but with a little bit more detail and all the items entered showing the 262,000, I can't really read that, as opposed for the current year versus the 203,000 for proposed in the upcoming year. This is for the redevelopment agency and like you see, I'm looking down here at the totals because that went up. Oh, I think it's been cut off. Can't see it. Well, I'll tell you what it is because I have the hard copy. It's, and we're going from 200, I can't read that, 216, 214? Yeah, we're going from 214 in the current year, 214,000 to 300,000 plus in the current year. And then in terms of tab allocations, the, I don't know why I can't read this slide very well.
It's blurry even there.
Very blurry. You can see it better up here then.
Let me see if I can see it better on the sheet.
Yeah, condensed, huh?
Wow. We're going from, oh well, we have, I meant to bring my magnifier. Yes, we have allocated for TAB, this is TAB funds for economic development. We have $3,196,200 that have been allocated. Encumbered, there's $2,273,267 and on the encumbered, the paid to date is $2,208,015. Oh, I guess that's it.
Do we have this where we can determine, talk about it or is it anywhere? I didn't see it in any of our...
We're, well, I only, I actually only got it yesterday but the...
Shouldn't it be in here?
It's gonna be posted and it'll be in the final budget document.
It's not in the current budget?
What?
Is all paid out, it's not, the salaries and stuff aren't paid and the advertising stuff isn't paid out?
No, that's paid out of the, well, that's paid out of the RDA pass through as far as the salaries.
So none of that is actually in this budget?
Well, it's in the budget but it's not...
Not the general fund?
No, 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 that's true. None of the expenses for the TAB expenditures or RDA is in the TAB budget. But by saying that, we also had to move what the amounts in the RDA budget that had been covered by that $250,000 we receive every year, that's been taken up with true RDA expenses now that they're no longer gonna pay. So that's been shifted into the general fund. But the amounts you see here are clearly from the RDA except because we have that overex, that $50,000 is probably gonna come out of the general fund.
Yeah, but the $203,000 that's in economic development is scheduled to come from the TAB allocation?
I find it a little difficult to try to, first of all, to read it, but even secondly to try to make comments on it without even having seen it 30 seconds ago.
So what part of your presentation you just did is in the general fund budget? Nothing?
Well, except for, let me go back a couple of slides. I want to point one thing out. Well, I could like to point it out but I can't. But right here, we're, that amount for next year is just over 300,000 and that amount used, is, we only receive $250,000 a year for RDA administration. Well, that entire $250,000 will be used for this payment, which only includes staff for RDA wind down activities and legal counsel. You can see the legal amount there for 90,000. So we're short in covering RDA costs by 50,000. Not only that, the, this $250,000 used to be available to cover our administrative activities which has now been shifted into, to our general fund, which is why I was saying that because DOF determinations, we're down 250 to 300,000 this year in the general fund because we used to have the $250,000 for us to be used for administration and now since they say they no longer will pay for our staff, our economic development managers' costs nor our attorneys' costs, that has to come out of the 250 and we're still 50,000 short, plus the 250 got moved. So we're into the general fund for 300,000 but it does not show up in this budget other than that $50,000 deficit on this chart that you can't see the bottom of.
We can here.
Oh.
So you're saying 300,000 of the budget is coming out of the general fund?
No, I'm saying 50,000 we'll have to.
And where is it in our presentation?
Probably transferred.
Redevelopment and economics development falls under the community development. There are subcategories of community development along with building and planning. That's in there, yes. That would be on page 23.
So that's part of the community development?
Correct.
Yes.
And all the rest of what was presented is coming out of TAB and RDA?
Wind down, ROCKs.
Yes, yes.
So this presentation was just business development or wasn't community development?
That's correct. The other areas of community development, the development services, the planning and the building, that'll be covered in the Public Works Department presentation.
Lieutenant, I have a couple of questions real quick. So on the RDA pass through that we no longer get, right, the 1.3 that the county now gets, 400,000 fire, of that, that is what we used to spend in economic development, right? If we were able to get some of that money back, would it be feasible to use at least a percentage of that back in economic development depending on the amount that we got, number one? Number two, can we at some time, because we have nothing in our budget other than the RDA that I'm aware of, to do economic development in the future? And we're in a position that that's gonna kill us soon. And so I know that as a budget right now, we just don't have it, but we need to find a way, whether that's impact fees, something to put some money aside for economic development. And I don't know where that would come from or what that would look like. Can you help us kind of touch on that a little bit so we can take a look at that?
Well, you're correct in that the redevelopment agency, that, the money for redevelopment was the money that was available for economic development, I mean for community development at large but specifically for economic development and some of the development services money. With the elimination of the RDAs, there isn't really a stream of revenue that flows toward those purposes. So what communities are left with is you have to cut that out of your general fund budget, carve it out, except for what's available for the administrative fee, you know, for the wind down activities, which doesn't get, which isn't specifically for economic development, rather the purposes for the wind down on, for the administrative costs of the ROCKs, for the sales of property and for the payments of the, of any indebtedness of the agency.
And once that goes away, we don't have that either.
That's correct too.
And so we're really in a position and part of our economic development, and I don't know if you know this, I mean, I'm sure you've heard us talk about Cosmont, we talked about that, but Cosmont, within the first two years we hired them, not only did they bring us a study that shows what is feasible, what would do well here and those types of things, they are the reason that we have the Marshalls, famous footwear and Joann's. And they're bringing us other stuff and they do that continuously. That's why ICSC this year was so successful and ICSC West Coast both are amazing in that to watch Cosmont do what they do, the relationships, the meetings they set up. And this year, their response simply by saying the words that council just passed and looked at a casino was the first time that we actually had people wanting to meet us, coming at us after we already had meetings set up and we were able to do that. So, but the benefit of Cosmont was where I was going, is crucial to our growth in that sector. And if we don't have something in place in the next couple of years, when we don't have ROCKs and we don't have anything else, we have no way to pay that and we really can't afford to lose that type of consulting. So I think it's prudent now to at least look at, we know it's coming from here, we may not be able to do it this year, but to look at some type of, creating some type of revenue stream, whether that's a percentage of new businesses that come in and the impact fee, some way to funnel revenue to economic development so we can cover those types of activities. It's hugely important. We won't have it.
Now fortunately, the activities of the consultants, the Cosmont, the Wida, they're, that can all be covered with TAB right now because that's considered project activity.
But again, that's gonna go away. We don't have unlimited TAB funds and unless we set something in place, everything's been done with one-time money.
That's correct. Unless there's some sort of reinstitution or re-establishment of RDAs, which particularly under this governor doesn't look likely, we have to, that'll have to be carved out of the general fund.
And I know we don't have it and yet it's a necessary thing to at least look at again. Not this year, there's no way for us to do it, but if we don't start looking at it, we're really gonna be behind the curve, I think.
Well, I understand that, but I guess my concern in the presentation, I've always been the feeling if we get industrial jobs, retail will come. We've always gone after retail and retail doesn't really support itself.
Right.
And you go back to, he's talked, in fact, he brought up in a public meeting when we were talking about the casino, this company that's gonna come with 1100 or 1200 jobs. We don't really have any details on that, but in the presentation, he mentions another automotive parts store. We've got at least four of those in town that I can think of. Why would we spend any time trying to bring another automotive parts store into town?
I believe the one, I'm not sure if that said parts. The reason is because I know that one of the proposals that he's working for actually manufactures parts. So I was trying to see where that one was, how he phrases that.
Automotive supply.
Okay.
And gas stations. You know, Cosmont's report said that we were low on our gasoline. And my point in their, that presentation is when I lived in San Bernardino, I had, I spent a lot more time going to and from work than I do now. I'm two miles from work where I was eight or nine in a lot of traffic before. So I'm not sure that's an accurate reflection that we could double our sales of gasoline in town. I don't think that's realistic. I don't think adding another gas station's increased gas sales in town.
The, on this particular slide right here, on the accomplishments and achievements, they haven't really done that, but as far as marketing and outreach, this, both the Monster and the Smog claim, I believe are, are both companies that are, that are manufacturing companies that are involved in the actual manufacture of parts and components.
It's not a gas station or that type. It's not, it's not retail. It's a manufacturing job. But the other manufacturing job that isn't listed here that we have our hands in, and I only know this because I've been working with Gary on this for two years now, is the state and their project with air pollution control. And that's a lot of jobs, but without anything, any kind of push elsewhere on that. But that's the type we're looking at and that's why we hired Wida who has produced absolutely zero. And we're not happy with them, I know that, and we're looking for another company, he's looking to do an RFP because they have done absolutely nothing for us.
Who's done absolutely?
Wida, World Economic Development Alliance. I can't say nothing. They developed some letterhead and some business card branding and they did a website and some, sort of social media, but that's stuff that we really have just in for. They're the ones when you saw in the presentation with the videos with the wrong airplanes and such, that they're the ones who did that. But they have not been really active at shows except one and they just haven't produced the level like we get from Cosmont or those who are active. So he wants to keep a placeholder in there, and I know this because we talked about it. He wants to keep a placeholder and send out RFPs to find a better company, a better fit, to find the industrial, like the industrial version of Cosmont because Wida's not cutting it.
So that company helped in Gary's presentation of portraying something that was not Ridgecrest?
They are the ones who did the video, videos.
I mean, that didn't describe Ridgecrest at all.
I know, and we paid him a heckle of a lot of money in order to do all of that stuff and instead of hiring somebody local to pull all that together, they, and part of that, and I'm sorry that Gary's not here, but I know that he said, you know, use some stock photos and stuff, but that's really not how that should have been handled and we paid him an awful lot of money for them to do stuff.
How much are we paying them?
Well, in the first year, we paid, I wanna say it was 180 and then in the second year, it's gone down, but that's a lot of money to get nothing.
Are we in contract with them for a certain length of time or can we?
I believe it's an annual contract. I believe it was...
It was a times and materials, I believe, and we're at the end of that.
Yeah.
It's exhausted.
There were $63,000.
Yeah, and then they had brought forth, they wanted money for this and money for that and Gary was like, no, because you've not produced and where's this, where's that? And again, I only know that because we worked on it together because I was following it because it was one of the ones that council did. We were very excited before, you guys were on council when we did the Protexa and...
No, we were not on council, we needed Protexa.
I know, that's what I'm saying. You guys were not on council when we did those. Well, Wida was part of that and we were all, I mean, council...
There were four, right, yes.
Yeah. Council was very excited because we were like, they're gonna bring us industrial and we have nothing, nothing like that to show for it. We don't have any solid leads we've been able to follow, nothing that I've been able to work with.
Well, where did dark fiber, Monster, Boom, Smog and Clean Water come from?
Well, that's what I was gonna explain is they have an interesting, I don't know if this is an industry standard, but they have an interesting way of doing business. They remain in the, as an intermediary and we don't actually get to talk knowing who these folks are. They have the client and they're trying to place the client with different cities and so they tell us Project Dark Fiber, they tell us what that's about, they tell us, but we don't know who the real company is. They just create a categorical name for an actual company that's interested in coming. But as far as, until it gets to the point that they can broker a deal, it's like they keep, we don't have the contacts.
So they could be blowing smoke up our you-know-what.
Which is why we don't want to renew the contract. Yes, and from what I've gathered from other cities and other people that I've contacted and it's their list, their own list of clients from, you know, when they presented it to us, other places have had the same issue. And so I took that to Gary and said, this is what I found and I know they haven't produced results for us, so hold their feet to the fire. If we don't get anything, I would not recommend that we do it again and we look for a better company.
Can I ask this question and that's only because I don't know, Dennis, so please or council, if, if the heartbeat is, Ridgecrest is for maybe not retail or other things, why do we go after the things that do not bring us the maximum benefit? Because it appears that we're not getting the best bang for our buck and then we as staff and council are looking like these things are not very profitable for us, so why, why even put it in the presentation that we're going after these kind of businesses?
Well, I mean, generally speaking, those would be good businesses to have, but if, but particularly if we had the contact and could work directly with the firms are. But we don't have the ability to do that the way Wida works the, I'll call it brokerage relationship, that may not be correct, but we don't have the ability to work directly with them.
So this company that Gary threw out in one of the casino discussions, it's gonna bring us 1100 or 1200 jobs, we don't even know who they are? Is that a Wida project or is that something else?
That's a Wida project, yes.
It's Wida?
So we have no idea who they are or even how the possibility we're gonna get them?
No, because the difference between Wida and Cosmont is that when Cosmont says something, they introduce us to the company and we take over from there. All they are is an introduction. That's what we assumed when the previous council contracted with Wida. That's what we thought would happen. It would be like Cosmont. What has happened is absolutely zero except for some pretty stationary and lousy videos that don't represent Ridgecrest. And so that's what we talked about, that's why it's like you have nothing to give us and without that, there's no place to go with that. So we want to find somebody and we've asked Cosmont if they know of some in the, in the industry that does the industrial because we know we need the jobs. That's what we're looking for. We're looking for the diversity, not the retail, but the jobs.
Yeah, because if we got a couple industrials that brought 10 or 1100 jobs, there's gonna be more demand for retail.
Exactly.
But the problem in this community, and I don't mean to demean Ridgecrest, however, we had two good clothing stores in town. One of them was Mervyn's. That was no fall of ours, that one broke. The other one was JCPenney. Now, if you recall, JCPenney closed down because they had the highest return rate of any JCPenney store west of the Mississippi.
Wow.
Because, yeah, the manager wrote a letter to the editor when they closed down. This is why we're closing down. People would go to Lancaster and Victorville and San Bernardino and Bakersfield to JCPenney's and buy stuff, then they'd bring it back here where it doesn't fit, so they'd trade it in here.
Oh, God.
And that's why JCPenney's didn't last. So JCPenney's, we lost JCPenney's because of us. Mervyn's was a national deal, that was just a bankruptcy thing.
I knew that.
But JCPenney's, we just didn't support them. We need a decent quality clothing store. I mean, right now, we got Kmart and Walmart and now we have...
Marshalls.
Marshalls.
A couple others, yeah.
I can tell you when we were at ICSC, and that was the important one about doing the latest show because it's the national convention, so you got 3,500 companies there. We actually talked to the only clothing retailer there which handles Lane Bryant, Maurices, and I don't have the list with me, I forgot it, but there's six or eight under their head and one is a men's clothing store. And so we meet their specs and so we're excited. So we set up, we met with them there and Gary's doing the follow-up on that. So that actually looked promising, but that's, that was the only one we could find there and I know he's talked to Cosmont, but I don't know where any of that is at this point. But that was one good one, but we do need that. But other than that, we need jobs.
I agree. We need some high-quality clothing stores. Whether the community will support them or not, I don't know. But that's, Cosmont's report showed that.
Yeah.
And I, and I agree with that with Cosmont. I don't agree with their gas station thing.
I don't disagree with you on that.
One of the things on the Smog issue, we had talked to, Gary had told me that, and sitting on the East Kern Air Pollution Control District Board, I went to them and asked them if they would go to Sacramento and encourage them to look more closely at this area and they got response back, gee, we're going to Riverside. So, I mean, for them to plug this as being an opportunity, I mean, that's where they all want to go. They are in, oh Lord, down near Pomona, but they, they're going to Riverside. That's where they all want to go. So it seems to me for us to say these are projects we are working on is a little bit disconcerting because it's not projects we are working on and it sounds like we've been fed pebbles.
Well, I think in terms of, it isn't so much Wida, it was just an indication from economic development manager. These are projects that he had furnished, requested information and data and demographics about our community and it's kind of like he has to go through, provides that to Wida and supposedly they provide it to these companies. And I wish Gary were here because he may know more specifically about the contacts, but every time we talk about it, he only talks about these code names, I'll call them.
That's all that's ever come through.
Which, which has been a little disconcerting to me because even if you're working with a broker, you kind of usually get an indication of who the other party is, so.
Do we, do we measure, is there a measuring tool that we have to see how we're doing in reference to recruiting or who we go out and court and those kinds? in reference to recruiting or who we go out and, and court and those kinds of things, Dennis?
I think the measurement would be, as far as your metrics, I think that'd be actual firms that are locating and coming to town.
And we don't have any.
Results.
Do we have, is there anything that we can gauge it on?
Not from, not from industrial.
Do you know of anything or a way that we could gauge it maybe?
I, I know in retail, we, we're supplied, our sales tax consultant supplies us with, they compare us to other similar communities and then they can gauge how much sales tax we're, we're receiving or not. And that way we can kind of see where we have some deficiencies in our market. I mean, that's one tool we do have. I'm not sure on the industrial side how you do that, but on the retail, that's.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot available in retail. I, I can get a, a market research from True Value on how everything stands, but, but on industrial, it's kind of hard to do. But when does the Weida contract come up for renewal?
Oh, it's. Yeah, it's, it's done. So.
Oh, God.
So I believe Gary's beginning the RFP process to solicit proposals.
That's what he said to me when I, when I asked him, so, which I think is good because he had said somewhere, because we haven't seen it, that in his proposal, it, it was on, it was a line item, but he didn't want us to think it was going to Weida because it wasn't. He was using it as a placeholder for whatever we get back on an RFP if we find something that's, that's good. That's what he had said to me, but I didn't, we don't know because we can't see his presentation.
Well, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but so.
I don't want to beat a dead horse either, but I'd like to make a couple of statements and if I'm wrong, someone please correct me. It seems to me we are in a position where we are in a dead zone. We are accomplishing little as far as economic development goes and we are accomplishing even less as far as trying to look at, and if I'm wrong, somebody better tell me, that we aren't looking towards the future. We're kind of maintaining and, and it seems to me that we are looking, I mean, we, I'm not going to say we ignore the businesses that are already here and not allowing them to grow, but I think we should be looking at how we spend our money wisely that gives us immediate return because quite frankly, we are in a declining system, economic system as far as our money goes. I see no reason to be joyful in this budget. We are using last, past holdovers to say we've balanced the budget and we, we can't exist on that kind of thing. It has to be on income, what we're getting new and, and continuing and to say that because we didn't spend money, that, and we have these holdovers, it, it is a, it is not fair to say we're in a good economic position because quite frankly, I think we're in a, a very, very difficult economic situation unless something changes. We're going to be in the same thing next year. Tell me if I'm wrong, somebody, please.
But we're not going to have $800,000 carryover to carry us in next year.
Yeah, we're going to be in a worse position.
I, I, I will chime in on one thing when it comes to this, only because I've done it with Gary. We have one person, Gary Parsons, who does economic development. You want to tell me how one person is supposed to sustain this whole town when it comes to going out?
I'm not saying he is.
But what I'm saying is we have no budget, as we discussed. We've relied on one-time money every single time. And he's, he's, no spring chicken. I know the man wants to retire.
I'm not talking, I'm not talking about people or their jobs. I'm talking about the situation we find ourselves in, whether Gary is the recipient of all the glory for the Marshalls and, and Famous Footwear and Joann's or Walmart or anything. He is, also bears the burden of things that haven't come. We need to look at what hasn't come, why not, what we're doing wrong, where we are in the whole position of economic development. It seems to me we have very little to offer to somebody, I'm glad there isn't a lot of people here, but we have very little to offer to somebody who comes in and says, what can you do for me? I, I think we have a golden opportunity here to be one of a few rather than one of many. And I want us to follow up and do that. And if it takes somebody helping Gary, then so be it. If it takes Gary's divided work in other areas and let him do what he does well and give him other jobs to do while we bring somebody else in, I'm not saying we need to get rid of him, we need to change, I'm not focusing on his work. I'm focusing on the results.
But what I'm saying is we have a, we have an opportunity as a council right now to fix one thing that's always been wrong and that is, here, go make this work, but we only have one-time money. I don't know what you're going to do next year for a budget, but hey, try to make this work. It, it's very hard to go and do your job or even say, okay, but I've got somebody who can help me do this, this and this, when we've never, as a, as a city, as a council, set up to have a steady economic development so we know what we can use and go on. We've, we've had meetings forever and a day that don't seem to lead anywhere, but the productivity is, is very challenging when you don't know each year if you're even going to have money to go and try to do something to bring people here for economic development. And I think we need to look at it as a whole and go, like, my, my personal opinion is take planning. We don't need a full-time planner, but a half-time would be great, but hire a full-time person to work under economic development, put them back together because I know it used to be that way and it is in other cities. And then that person could help with economic development and understand it, plus do the planning. We've got the state of California's plan for the next four years now of $200 million set aside to bring businesses into California or keep them here and we use that as an incentive. So we have some opportunities. We were looking at redoing and, and we started that with our ordinances that we can do to be business-friendly. So we need to make sure we hold to that and waive what we can or work with companies and I know we do that. What else we do as a whole, I don't know. But I do know we have some, some holes that we need to, to fix and find a way to do so. And, and I'm not here saying one person over another. I'm just saying this is what I know and I've done it for four years since I've been on council with him. I have gone because that's what I ran on and I help Gary every chance I get all that I can with economic development. And I know what I see going to shows and bringing people here and talking to them. And I know you guys have people that come in and talk to you. So I, I know what it's like on the other end when we go and we try to talk to companies and bring them here, whether that's retail or industrial, because I've done both shows repeatedly. I know what it looks like and I know what we can and can't use, but we got to have more than one person who can, who can do it. We, we need help.
But you got to remember why the base came here in the first place was because it's remote and, and that's a detriment to other businesses coming here. You know, when I was on the council before, the city administrator came and says, Walmart's looking for a distribution center. Should we go after it? And we said, yeah, go after it. So he wrote a letter and they wrote an isolated back saying, you know, thank you, but no thank you because why would you want to put a major distribution center here? We don't have the highways. I mean, if I was going to put one here or Barstow, Barstow would win out every time because it's right on a freeway. Then we got accused of keeping the distribution center out. You know, we have a segment of this community that is no growth. And I've, I've had several people in the community tell me this, you know, over the last six weeks when we were discussing the casino, this community has always been no growth. Well, not everybody in this community's been no growth, but as a whole, this community's been pretty no growth. And so it's hard to, to get a business that wants to come here with, with that kind of diversity. I'm not, and I'm not criticizing any staff members because, you know, it's, it's getting an industrial complex to come here is like banging your head against this wall. It's very difficult.
I don't disagree with that and, and from an infrastructure standpoint, we wouldn't be able to have more than, I would say, 50,000 people total in this community, be able to, to support it with infrastructure without then having to redo everything. So I get that and I'm not saying we're going to explode with growth, but we've also always put all of our eggs in one basket. And the reality is they may be able to bomb here, but they could build what they build on that base. Other places, we don't want them to and I don't want them to leave, but if they do, we all know, we've all said it. I mean, that's 80%, 85% of what supports our town. We know that. But we still do have to have diversity and I know it's a challenge. It's a challenge we face. But if we could be as job-friendly, use the state tax, use what we can with ordinances and everything else we can throw at them to make them think this is good, whether that's a server farm and, and exploit broadband to death or a call center or, you know, those types of things, we've got to try and seek it out. I just don't know how we do it with one person trying to do it all. I mean, I know we help as much as we can on council, but we all work full-time. You have a business, she has a business. So I, I don't know how else to do it. And to, to not ever know if we're going to have money to do it is also a challenge that we've got to figure out.
That's a challenge.
Whether that's you work on commission by businesses you bring or something, but we got to figure it out.
I would not want to work in this community on commission for bringing business to town.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, we got to figure something.
That could be starvation, so.
I did have one comment addressing Councilmember Mowers, a, a statement on the, you know, sustainability. And I believe the mayor brought that up too because we're looking at $800,000 shortfall. But I think that the, from a staff perspective, I think when you hear the results of our survey for Mezrel, when the Godbe presents that to the council here in the next couple of meetings, there, there is a, there is a very, very strong support in the community, not just for the continuation of 3/4%, but for 1%. And I believe our finance director has calculated that that's probably about $900,000 increase to the general fund at a 1% and they're also supportive almost to the 70% margin for a longer duration than the 5%. But I didn't want to comment on that, but, but because you made the statement, we're aware that you can't sustain a budget when you've got an $800,000 deficit. But at the same time, the election is in November and the, it seems to be very positive from the survey that was just recently completed.
Well, let's, let's hope Measure F is not an indication.
Yes.
But.
Oh, the library.
One of the, one of the things that concerns me is that we are operating from day to day. It almost seems like that we have a difficult time planning for the future based on economics. And I understand that we are limited. I understand staff is limited, but at some point in time we have to say, we're either going to stand up and be a city and do it right, or we're going to die and become part of the county. Now, what alternatives are there? Are there alternatives that you can say, we cut the police? Do we use Mezrel to go back into the general fund to sustain general fund? Do we, when people understand that it was for public safety and streets, to, and I'm not saying we don't promote Mezrel. I definitely, we ought, ought to be out there raising and jumping up and down and saying, look, listen here, understand and look at the benefits there are for that. But no matter what, it comes down to everything is the dollar. And I can't imagine how we're going to be a whole lot better next year except for Mezrel. We weren't, we're not going to have $800,000 and, I mean, we're not going to have rollover money. What was that? 500? How much was the rollover?
By the end of the year, it was, would have been $500,000 for the next year.
We're not going to have that.
Well, I think what we need to do, number one, Dennis mentioned the $400,000 for the fire that needs to go away. We need, we need to not talk to Kevin McCarthy's office. We need to sit Kevin McCarthy down personally and talk to him about health.
Yes.
You know, I think every other base town in the country gets some and we ought to be getting some.
I agree.
And I think we've been snickered over the years and I think it's time that we, that we ask our congressman, who's a pretty high-powered congressman, to step up and, and support us financially.
And I think, I, I think the same thing with Supervisor Gleason and the county. They are, we need to go to them and say, this money that we had with RDA, we gave it up so we could support and now the, we don't have it. You have the RDA money. We want some of that. It's, I mean, I understand that the county is in, in no great shakes, no great shape economically, but the fact remains that there are people who are, who are out there that could offer solutions hopefully and we need to engage and talk and see how we make those things happen. Seriously, not just.
Before next year's budget.
Yeah. And I don't want to come back next, well, depending on the election in November, I don't want to come back next year and say, okay, we're depending on rollover money again. Not a thing to do. Any business worth its salt knows that you plan more than one year in advance and you know what you can do. And I know we are limited, but I don't think we're do, we have done well and I don't think we're continuing to do well trying to rely on one-time monies and, and rollover money. It, it just doesn't add up. Now, I'm not placing blame. I'm not saying who's wrong. It's just simply I think that's a fact of business.
We probably move on, huh? Well, I, I just had one quick thing. And that is, we, I hear Lori and Peggy and Mike, just help me again, Mr. Spear. Given this presentation that Mr. Parsons put together, what, and him being your employee, what is the solution that he's offering to us being over this department so that we do not continue down this path? Has he, has he presented anything to you that you could present to council so that the citizens can feel assured that we have a plan outside of this one-time funds that, that we're all talking about?
Well, in order to expand upon his capabilities, I mean, he is recommending the continuation of our contract with Cosmot, who has served us well in terms of retail. And in addition though, he is in the process of preparing RFPs to find a, a better, if you will, firm that can, can attract and bring in the industrial component. And he is, he has been involved in the, for the city's interest on very economic, various economic development committees throughout the county. And apart from that, for one person, that's, that's about what he.
About all they can do.
Yeah, that's about all they can do. And you have to understand too, that when the RDA went away, the very first thing that then city manager did was cancel the contract to Community Development Director, realizing that we were not going to get RDA money after that. And so the only person left that had anything to do with community development as such, community and economic development, has been our Economic Development Manager at that point. Because, and when you're talking about, I think I made it clear, I hope I did, that when, when you were actually evaluating me, I told you that I'm not doing my job because my job is to plan, organize, direct, coordinate, control. That's what executive management does. We're out four department heads of the six that are called for in the, in the city code. I have to cover for those other four department heads. I don't have the luxury or time to plan because we just don't simply have the people. But we are, and I, I sort of take exception to the one-time. I don't think you're going to find one-time money, that $800,000. It was money that we judiciously and discretionarily, discretionarily in the execution of last year's budget, made sure we didn't spend if we didn't need to spend it so that we could have that money available for next year's budget.
Will that money be available next year?
$500,000 and if we also take a look at the end of the year next year and if we have, if we have funding that, I mean, if we have expenditures that are in the budget that we can defer or that we don't have to expense out, we can add to that $500,000. When I took over as city manager back in 2012, our reserve was $84,000.
One last quick thing, Dennis, and then we can go on, I hope. Seeing that, well, what is the, our number one resource of, of revenue coming in?
Number one is sales tax.
Sales tax.
Followed by TOT.
Okay. If it, if that's number one and we are stretching, say, a person that thin, that we're relying so heavily upon them, and I only, why, why wouldn't we put in the budget maybe to get some help?
Well, as you, as you can see, we're at a point that we're, expenditures are over revenues by $800,000 right now. There's, and we've already lost 42 employees. We're 25% down in staff. Most of the departments, except for police, have experienced, they're on skeleton crews. And to add any, anyone to the budget right now is, like I said, you're, you're $800,000 expenditures over revenues now with the, with the proposed budget.
Okay.
Which is why we're trying to use tab dollars outside of the general fund dollars for consultants that are very good at what they do. And we feel Cosmot is, but we're, we're taking another look at the industrial consultant.
And theoretically, the Super Walmart will bring in more sales tax dollars, theoretically. I mean, twice as big.
The, the, the Super Walmart won't because what they're, yeah, they're expanding on their groceries.
Groceries, which are. Groceries, which are non-taxable.
But however, we are, one's already signed, as I understand it, to take over half the existing Walmart building. That's a new business. And I understand that the second one that wanted to come in there is still looking for a site. They're still interested in Ridgecrest, but the contract provision of the first one wouldn't allow the other one to come into that particular building. So they're trying to get someone else there. So we're anticipating you're going to get three new businesses, or three new, is large box the right word, but big box.
Big box.
Three new big-box stores in this next year. But the two for Walmart won't cap until after Walmart moves out of their existing facility.
And that will adversely affect other businesses in town.
The one, probably definitely the other one, I don't think so.
The other one, I don't think so, because we don't really have one.
I believe that's a leakage, in fact.
Yeah, it is.
For that second store.
And then, from ICSC, because Gary's not here to tell you, we have hotels basically now fighting to get in here. And one of them, which was Wyndham, has been to town several times, has talked to the second highest number of police calls placed in town, and is looking to, starting discussions, and has already brought out their construction team to tear it down, put in a nice extended stay there, and then build another hotel. So we do have that on the horizon. And there was a couple of others, including replacing the chicken with a different chicken, because that guy actually is familiar with here. He put in our Jack in the Box, and he's now in charge of another chicken, so they are coming out. Wyndham actually is supposed to be here, I think next week is when they put it on the schedule, Wyndham Hotels. It was fascinating at ICSC this year. It's the first time we've ever had really large success, but I see we cut the fire contract. That's 400,000. We could at least put 100,000 with the 500,000 and then for an employee for this position, and then put the other three in there.
Is that important?
Yeah. That's what I say we do. We're doing the budget.
Okay. When we're talking about things here, I just want to make it clear to everybody that we are not criticizing staff, that we are criticizing the situation and asking for opportunities. Because, quite frankly, because we only have one person in economic development, it's real easy to sound like we're criticizing Mr. Parsons. Can we do better? Absolutely. Should we do better? Absolutely. The fact remains that without additional income, we're not going to. And that's where we are. I think if I'm making that assumption erroneously, I hope somebody tells me, but money begats money. Success begats success. And we have some success to try to harvest, but I also would want us to look at the businesses we already have here, what we can do. It's easiest to take care of a business that you already have, to encourage them and help them grow, rather than try to spend a lot of money on somebody new. And I would like us to look at what we can do to make businesses more productive. We can't do those things. How we can help them become better, stronger, more fully involved in the community, and encourage them to not rest on their laurels and to grow themselves, because we are here to do what we can to support them.
I propose we move on.
Okay. Now, somebody asked last night, before we go on to the next one, could we take public comment between each one rather than wait till the end? And unless you have any objections, I'd like to do that. Do we have any public comment on economic development?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Stan Ortoro. Indirectly related to the economic development, but related to the discussion that just happened here, I find the conversation regarding $800,000 of rollover a little confusing, because what, as I remember seeing the charts, the $800,000 of savings that we had during, I don't know, third and fourth quarters of last year, brought us down to the point where we were only $331,000 in the red. We would have been, if it hadn't been for some obvious, very judicious bookkeeping and a lot of hard work toward the end of the year, we would have been $1.1 million in the red. So to say that we had a rollover of funds, I think, is misleading to the people who don't understand the fact that we actually were in the red this year. I mean, the expectation for this year is that we are around $300,000 to $330,000 in the red. And then the expectation is that we're going to be another $800,000 in the red in the next fiscal year. And so what I, it's confusing when I hear you talk about rollover, because there wasn't any rollover. What we did is we minimized our losses, and thank God we did, but there is no rollover when I look at the real budget.
I think you're 100% right. The rollover term we're using is probably not very fair to the public who doesn't understand that it was savings by staff. Dennis, did you want to say something?
No, I was just going to say, just clarify, rollover is cash balance.
Any other public comment? Okay, next one.
Oh, yes, Madam Mayor and members of the council, the next presentation will be by Parks, and I believe Mr. Patton is available to make that presentation.
All right, Madam Mayor, members of the council, this will be hopefully shorter than any of the other ones you've heard so far. Let's see, let's jump right in. So our goals in our department pretty much never change from year to year. We want to provide exceptional customer service to the community, continue to provide excellent recreation programs, maintain all parks and facilities to the highest possible standards, complete capital improvements, improvement projects using funding sources outside of the general funds, because currently we don't necessarily have the funds in the general fund to do improvements to our facilities. So we try to look for other ways, which we'll talk about a little bit later. So the department's broken up into really four different divisions. We have City Hall, which obviously we're sitting in here, which includes the maintenance and staffing and supplies that go along with the care and maintenance of the building. The Parks Department is really the biggest as far as consumption of the general fund, because it covers so many, it basically covers the maintenance part of everything else except for City Hall that the city owns, the Kermagie Center, all the parks and such, and everything else the city owns, the medians. And then we have the Recreation Department, which, of course, they handle all of our recreation programs. We run the recreation programs and all of the, for adult, the ones we have for adults and the youth. And administration is just the support staff, like myself and one other person. So the City Hall budget in a whole is $168,000. That basically includes the personnel that maintains it, utilities, of course, all of the supplies, and upkeep and maintenance. The Parks, which is the largest portion of the budget for the reasons I just said, is the maintenance of the Kermagie Community Center, and all of our parks, and all of the other facilities owned by the city, such as the old Boys and Girls Club and the Senior Center. So that takes up a large portion. I didn't break this down into every line item, because the line items are huge in all of these departments, and you'd probably go cross-eyed looking at it, but you have that information already, so I didn't want to be redundant. Just kind of wanted to cap on how much is in each, whoops.
What is the difference in number, I think, is it not?
What's that?
On page 23, is the difference in number of parks? Yours was 873. Your previous slide, sir.
864.
And this one says 874.
What are you looking at?
Should match.
On page 23, Parks and Recreation, those line items will include the administration, the recreation, and the parks. The City Hall budget will be on the previous page under the General Government.
Okay. City Hall is different.
You show 168, 154. Okay, that's all three of these items, salaries, service charges, and materials altogether.
Correct. It's the entire department.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Sure. Recreation, we just went over. That's, no, we didn't. I don't think we did Recreation yet. $428,000 a year for the, to put on our recreation programs. Again, that includes supplies, the staffing and everything that goes with that.
You have a revenue source on that also.
Yeah, we'll get to that, too. Right now, I'm just telling you what the expenditures are, and we'll cross over that here in just a second. Administration, like I said, is the supplies and benefits and salaries and that for the support staff was myself and one other person. That's pretty much it on that one. So the total budget for all four divisions, including the City Hall, is 1.64 million, and I included those all because it's all under the same roof of Parks and Recreation. The Parks and Recreation budget alone, excluding City Hall, is about $1.472,000. So the Parks and Recreation budget says $1,472,000. The projected revenue for the Parks and Recreation Department is somewhere between 375 and 400 for next fiscal year. Before we go on to that. So what that means basically is, with a $14 million budget approximately, we have, our department, the Parks and Recreation Department alone, only affects the budget by 1%, I mean, what's 1%? By about around 10%, a little over 10% because of the revenue. So not too bad. We're hoping to increase that, but that's where we are at now, so it's about 10% of the budget that the Parks and Recreation Department affects the general fund. So this is a look at some of the projects we completed this last year. And keep in mind, again, that there's not a lot of money in the general fund to do capital improvement projects, so we never want the public or the council or anyone else to think that we just kind of sit around and say, well, we can't do anything because we don't have any money. So we continue looking for other revenue sources, like currently we have the TAB funds and we have some of the community development block grant money. So these are some projects we do with that kind of money. As you remember, a few years ago, our concession stand at Kermagie Youth Sports Complex burned down, so this last year, we finally completed the project to replace that. Most of the money from that project came from the insurance money from the previous building, and the remainder of the money that it took to do it came from TAB funding. This is the flooring project, is what we're trying to show you here, that we did this last year in the Kermagie Center, which was desperately needed. This is just a portion of it. We did, I forgot how many square feet, but it included our preschool area and basically all of the hallways and the entire facility. This is important, because if you remember, or don't know, this was all carpet, and this is about 30-year-old carpet. So 30-year-old carpet is no good. So we desperately needed to get rid of that for many reasons. It looked horrible, it was stained up, and it just needed to be replaced.
It wasn't quite 30 years, about 28.
Well, okay, 28 years. I'll give you that.
Twenty-eight and a half.
28.5. So we decided to go with this hard cement surface, because it'll last more than 30 years, and we won't have to worry about it.
By the way, getting that much out of carpet in this kind of an area was pretty amazing.
Well, it was overdue.
I'm sure it was.
So we got that done. And if you remember, we did these door projects for a couple of reasons, for ADA, one, but two, the doors were almost 28.5 years old, and they were just totally worn out. So we did the front door here at City Hall. We did three doors at the community center next door, and we also did the penny pool, which the penny pool doors were basically barely hanging on the hinges, and presented more of an ADA issue than replacing with regular doors, so we went with that to make it easy for everyone.
Were all those done with TAB money?
Those were done with, no, I think those were done with impact fee money.
Impact fee money, okay.
So what we're trying to do this coming year with community development block grant money is, not trying to do, we're in the process of doing with that money, the senior center, we're in the design part right now. We're getting, probably in the next week or two, going to go out to bid for the design part of this project to do some rehab on the, if you guys remember, you approved some additional CDVG funding a few months back, so we can get done what we were trying to get done. So that's coming up this coming year. This is the Kermagie Youth Sports Complex, obviously, and we have a major renovation going here. This will be TAB fund projects that we're in the middle of the design on right now, and I'm meeting with our consultant, HLA Group, on Tuesday, I believe, to go over the 75% completion on this design. There'll be, the fields will be rehabbed. A lot of fencing work will be done. There'll be lights put on the soccer field, because we have a tremendous need for lighted fields that we're really lacking in, so we're going to take care of that issue. We're going to take care of all of the, I don't want to say hazardous issues, but the fencing there is coming apart in places and could present a problem, so we're going to take care of all that, take care of a lot of the ADA issues we have out there to make, to bring it up to speed. Same thing.
Mr. Jackson, real quick, will you put the football back over here, or will you continue to use the field over the park?
The football will stay where they are, because the major problem we have with football being over here, football usually has six to eight teams, and there's enough room when you're practicing for about two teams on the football field, so they would use the baseball fields. And I can tell you from coaching myself, the football players destroy the baseball fields every year, and we can never catch up. So it's much better for resting and reseeding and fertilizing if we keep them off of those baseball fields during their, during the baseball's offseason, and keep them where they are, because they have adequate room over there at Jackson Park. So the idea is to never put them back over there. That'll continue to be used for increasing soccer demand, which is the big issue right now, because we don't have enough room, enough lighted room to put our soccer organizations. So that'll help. And we're going with energy-efficient LED lighting out there, so it'll be really nice for them.
Are they going to have solar regeneration on them? I'm big on that. I can't help it.
I would love to, but we don't have nearly enough money to accomplish that.
But it would save us so much money.
The LED lights will cut probably down to one-tenth the cost of what we're now paying.
Yeah. A solar project out there would be, we could absolutely do it, we just don't have the funding right now.
All I meant was the solar panels that are on the lights to help charge them, just like they have on base and other places. I don't mean a solar project.
Oh, you mean physically on the lighting units.
Yeah, so they help the lights. It's a great thing.
I do not think that's the plan, but I'll look into it and see if that's a possibility.
Thank you.
Again, it's a budget issue.
Yeah, I totally understand.
The main focus when we're doing these TAB projects is to make sure, we don't have enough, you know, there's not enough funding to do everything we need to do, so the main focus is taking care of repairs that are desperately needed, because we talked about these buildings for 30 years, those things have been out there for 60 years. So, and some of it's original. So we really need to repair things and take care of ADA issues, and that's about it, and the lighting.
Right. And with the solar panels on the lights, too, because I know we have an issue, and you and I have gone through this before, where somebody's not there to turn on the lights, and then we're getting calls, and we've got to send somebody out and stuff. So, I mean, I just kind of want to handle it all, if we can, if it's feasible.
Yeah. You know, for the lighting issue, even if there are solar panels on them, you still have to have it set to where they come on and off, and you'll, I mean, you'll still have those same old issues with timers and that kind of thing. Basically the same, this is Upjohn Park, TAB funds, these are in the plans to be rehabbed, and basically same thing. Where in all the parks, basically, we're just going to be replacing old equipment that's outdated, and if you look at our parks, basically what's been happening, as far as when something breaks, we remove it and can't replace it. So that's due to the age of the equipment, and all of our parks are beyond the normal life. And all of our parks are beyond the normal lifespan and we've just been kind of maintaining them best we can. So, those will all come out and we'll put new equipment on there, keep us good for the next ten to fifteen years. Pearson Park, same idea. Taking care of some ADA issues and replacing equipment. Basically, that's all, that's about what we've got in the budget to do there. So, that's it. Those are the projects we have coming up this year and will be funded with funds other than general fund. Because currently, we don't really have any capital improvements money for any of the areas. There's a very little bit, I think around eight thousand dollars that we have in the budget. If I remember correctly, that'll, for improvements to City Hall, I believe it is. And I understand why, but we must be prepared, you know, if I had anything on my wish list, it would be probably about a seventy-five thousand dollar set-aside fund for major issues that could come about for the department. The twenty-eight point five-year-old air conditioners that we still have on our buildings could become an issue at any moment, as we've experienced just recently. They're all old. We've replaced, I think, three out of the probably ten that we have between the two buildings are original.
And probably not very efficient.
I guarantee you, they're not very efficient. And the company that does the maintenance for us, they're amazed that they're still operating. Actually, said these things are built the last ten to fifteen years and we're running on almost thirty years here. So, you know, the baling wire and duct tape is kind of holding everything together. So, some of the, keep in mind, you know, if you see me back up here again, it's probably because something went out and I need more money because currently built into the budget, we just don't have it and we all understand why. But, just in the back of your minds, just so you know that there are issues that could, you know, as, when I talk to Mr. Spear about this, it's not a matter of if these things go out, it's when, because they're mechanical. So, I don't want it to be a shock if we do have to come back. Same thing with our wells, same issue. So, that's the only thing I'm really concerned about. The rest, we'll get by and carry on another year. That's all I got.
I have questions.
Let them fire.
Okay, I'm trying to make it easy and as painless as possible. First off, I just want to say thank you and I'm really glad that, you know, I've looked through the budget and the fees and I know we've talked about having to raise some and such and you're keeping a really good eye on that and I appreciate that. So, thank you, it's so much better than in times past.
Yeah, we raised them once this past year and the fees haven't been raised in quite some time. So, over the next couple of years, without, you know, trying to shock the public, we'll increase the fees little by little and it's because we need to cover our costs. And right now, we're not, as you can see, the income is, as far as, we're close and we're doing good and it's been increasing. But, we need to cover the cost of running these programs and that's exactly what our goal is. And we can't do that without increasing the fees with the cost of the increase of equipment and shirts and staffing and all that other stuff. So, we'll get it to that point, but we want to make it as easy on the public as we can also because the idea behind our programs is to have as many of our youth to be able to participate as possible where we offer programs for fifty-five dollars, private organizations are a hundred and fifty, and two hundred and three hundred. And you go to some of the travel teams, it's much, much more than that. So, a kid can play seven, eight weeks in one sport for fifty-five bucks, it's pretty good. So, that's what the goal is, to make it as painless as possible to the public.
And it shows and so, thank you for that because you're doing a balancing act and you're doing it well and I appreciate that. Couple of questions for you, one on Pearson because I know that's designed to be, if we ever have rain again, to be the catch-all and stuff. So, when you're talking about improvements there, is it going to survive if we do have rain? And it feels like it's supposed to, kind of thing, keeping that cleaned out and stuff. Does that fall under you or does that fall under streets? I don't know where it falls, so.
Yeah, it's, when that park was built, from what I understand, if I remember correctly, because I think I've asked that question when I was on the council, I think it was designed to be a sump for rain. So, there's no way to really go with that and, I mean, other than fill it in and have it drain onto the street, which I don't think we want. So, I don't see that changing, yeah.
Okay, so you're prepared for that with the upgrades, however that works? Not upgrades, but maintenance, making it look pretty again.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be, there's not much going to change. It's basically the main changes at the parks are going to be the equipment and maybe some ADA paths to the equipment that are required. The one major change that I think will make a lot of people happy is one of the main complaints that I get is the shade. So, the first design that the consultants brought to me had no shade, just like the little ones, kind of like you see over at the Petroglyph Park, that little shade, which I don't really know what the purpose is. So, we're having bigger shades put on, kind of like you see on the base.
Thank you.
Kids can actually use the equipment in the summertime.
Yeah, that's the complaint I've gotten is, can't go to the park because another kid's can touch any of the equipment, it's too hot.
Correct, so I threw that back at them and said, no, we need to have adequate shade. It's the middle of the desert, we need shade for our kids if we want them to actually use the parks. So, they put that back in or put it in. And also, you know, I should mention that part of the plan for all of our parks and facilities are going to smart water system, which will help tremendously with a lot of current issues we have. And my plan is, I really should get someone here to explain to you what that really means because there's a lot of different benefits to having that for leakage and moisture and all kinds of stuff. So, it'll stop a lot of our problems, like when we have a stuck valve or a break in a pipe, it'll shut it off automatically because it'll recognize the different flow. So, we don't have citizens calling saying, why do you have water running down the street? And it won't water when it's raining and all that, you know, all that kind, there's a lot of benefits to the smart water systems.
When is that anticipated?
Well, we hope to have, that's a two-fold question. For the parks, when I say parks, I mean Leroy Jackson and Up, I mean, Leroy Jackson, Pearson Park and Upjohn Park, we plan to have those completed by the end of this calendar year. The Kermit G. U. Sports Complex, we plan to have shortly after that. I mean, maybe by March is the current plan to have all of these completed. When we have the design portion completed, I'll be back with you guys to show it to you. And I don't see much discussion about it because we're taking care of issues, basically. So, but that's up to you, of course. Just so the public knows and you know what the final design is and what, like Mr. Wicknick was asking one time, what does everything truly cost? Well, at that point, we'll know all that so we can bring it back and take any comment from you. And so, when we have our, what we consider a hundred percent plan done, we'll bring it back so you can take a look.
Dennis, did you have something you wanted to add?
I was just going to mention, I think it was, not this year, but the last year, we just, they dug out and that dry well at Pearson Park. So, that's been.
They got the what?
The dry well at Pearson Park.
Oh, yeah.
That was about two years ago, so, I mean, it should be able to accommodate the drainage much better.
Yeah, that is true, I forgot about that.
And just a couple of things from years past that I know we've looked at, I'm sure you've looked at again and it just enters my head. One was the artificial turf, which I know we've talked about because it gets so hot and hard to, it's actually worse, I think. And I don't know if that's still the case, but I'm guessing. And the other is the shape of our pool, since I know we had to look at closing that before and we have it under you and I'm grateful and I know the community is, I just want to see where we're headed with that because I know we have to be prepared.
Yeah, the pool, the pool is what it is. When I, before I took over, when Mr. Ponik was still here, he had a complete study done of that pool. You know, and the issue is, we're continuously looking for grants for the pool, but we work with USA Swim, which is the largest organization in the country. When I was still on council, we worked with them, just trying to find solutions for our pool. And there's just nothing out there that, because really, the issue with the pool is, when he had a study done, we found between code compliance and ADA issues that we've been grandfathered in. If we start a project in the pool then, back then in two thousand eleven or twelve, I think was that study was originally done, I think it was two thousand eleven, it was a one point two million problem before you could really get anything done. So, I imagine that's probably up to about one point five or more after the two thousand thirteen changes in code and ADA compliance. So, before you even get started, you're looking probably at one point five, one point six million to take care of issues. And then you have to take care of the problem of the pool, which is an old pool. The pool's forty years old or something like that. So, unless we can find some grant money, which we've been unsuccessful, but not for a lack of looking, I can guarantee you that. Yeah, it's on a limited lifespan, the next few years, I would hope, the next few years. That pool is kind of like the air conditioner, it's one disaster away from being closed down for good. Because I don't see, in our current situation, us dumping three or five million dollars into the pool to keep it open. And that's probably what it would take, but at least three million. So, and again, it's all because once you go down the road of fixing the pool, the one point five million dollar issue of code compliance, ADA compliance comes into play and we just don't have the money.
And artificial turf?
Artificial turf, you know, every time I go to a show, I talk to those guys and I tell them where we live and they're like, yeah, you can do it. And anyone that can get on the base can go check out the turf on it, it's really hot. It's really hot, you say, well, spray it down, it makes it worse, it makes it like a swamp.
Good smell.
So, and the cost of it, you know, it's very, very, very expensive. It's very expensive. And they say this stuff has an eight to ten-year lifespan, but here, I'd probably guess maybe six.
And I know the different grade, my girlfriend had it done and so, I kind of understand more now that I've experienced it more often because we needed like the Zamboni that you do for ice rinks, but for that and there was a lot of maintenance factors that go into it.
They have the little beads in there that get piled up and you have to buy equipment that spreads it all out. And the residential grade is much different than a playing field turf.
Oh, yeah, I can just imagine what that would be like. So, I just didn't know if anything changed, so I thought I'd ask while you were here.
Nothing I've seen would be
Nothing exciting, nothing good that'll benefit.
Cost-effective or play-effective, in my opinion, from what I've seen. It's because of the heat, the extreme, and the cold. I mean, it expand and shrink, expand and shrink, it's like, you know, electrical wires.
Family in Las Vegas and they use that up there on some of the fields and the kids are refusing to even
It's terrible.
It is, you slide on that and it's a hundred degrees you're sliding in.
Yeah. I don't see it happening, yeah, plus the cost. Cost is, it's very expensive. I think they spent, just on that one project they did, about two and a half million dollars in turf on that field.
I think
That'd be a little difficult.
I think that was my only question, so if you guys, I covered fees again, thank you.
I just had a real quick one. Looking at this on page twenty-three, did you go up or go down budget-wise?
There's no change. We didn't add any, anything. Can't, we didn't add any people. Our people count on the part-time side always fluctuates, so I shouldn't say we didn't add or subtract any people. It just depends on the need for the timing, but the budget amount, the people can change, but the budget dollar amount doesn't change. One year, we might have ten lifeguards, one year we might have fourteen. One year for the summer programs, we might have twenty-five, one year might have twenty. But, the budget dollar amount doesn't really change because we still have to have the same coverage.
Well, the reason why I ask is because you may mention of the ten percent revenue that is affecting the budget that I would hate for us to cut services that we render to this community because it's really a family-oriented community.
Yeah.
That you do a good job offering services and the price. So, I would hate to have upset parents when we had to cut programs because you do, or your department does make money, so to speak.
We don't make money, we try to break even. And that's where we're trying to get to is a break-even point. Because really, on the recreation side, if you cut the recreation side, if I have to cut it by fifty thousand, that's what it means. We lose programs, but on the other hand, you're going to lose that revenue, so it's kind of a wash. If I, you know, the goal is to get those revenue, the recreation programs to a break-even point and to, you know, to a point where I can come to you and say, I can hire two more recreation people and add the programs so it's a zero net gain or loss to the city's general fund. We're close to that, but that's really where we want to be, to where the recreation side really has no effect and we're close.
I was just trying to give you a compliment, Jason, that's all. And around about all that fortune.
We've not cut any programs or services. We've changed them. I mean, that's a continuing thing to where each year, we look at what was successful and what wasn't. If it's not successful, we don't offer it again. And we try new things and see if that'll work based on what the public is telling us they want. We tried, we threw rugby in there one year because we get all kinds of people saying, yeah, it would be great. And you get one sign up, so you go, okay, we're not doing rugby. Adult dodgeball, yeah.
Pot holder making.
What'd you say?
No.
Pot holder making?
You've got to be sixty-nine years old before you know how you crochet a pot holder.
What we are looking to, though, is for, on the revenue side, too, as well, is right now, the department doesn't offer any events. It's all, all events that are done at our facilities are done by outside sources. And I'm talking to one of my employees right now about how she feels about doing some event coordinating that we would run ourselves and that would bring in additional. We have a facility that doesn't get used. Weekends are, yeah, they're booked out crazy, but we're going to try to get some things in here and maybe even do it ourselves with our own in-house staff to generate some more revenue with the facility that we have. So, that's something that's going to, I should have put that in there, that we're going to try to get going this fiscal year.
It actually shows salaries going up ten percent.
From when? I mean, when I say, when I say nothing's increased, I mean, it was from our original budget last year.
Okay, the year-end projection is eight seventy-four and next year's budget is nine sixty-two. I'm just going by the figures here.
Are you looking at what the final cut was for this year?
Well, I'm sure that's the final cut.
Right, so if you consider that, then, yeah, we're going back to where we originally were. Because we need to. It's not different than the previous year's budget, is what I'm saying.
Before cuts.
Before cuts.
What cuts are you talking about?
Well, we had the, you guys talked about it last night, we had a budget cut in August or whenever, or, was it August? Yeah, August, each department took a budget cut.
When we had to adjust the seven forty-two, so he originally was budgeted the original amount of nine and then he had to budget, or do the cuts as everybody did, so it took you down, your projected year-end is eight sixty, but for next year's budget, he's keeping it at what he was budgeted last year at nine, right?
Yes.
There was, we didn't use the word cut, there was another word we used.
We used adjustment.
You're talking, you're talking about the
You adjusted it down, that's a cut. I don't care what you call it, it's a cut.
We use it, I'm saying, we used another word.
I think you're talking about our year-end, I think you're talking about our year-end projections is what we did and the departments gave, you know, went through their budgets and said, this is what we're going to give back for our year-end projections. I think maybe is what you're talking about. We only had one true budget cut, right? We called the budget cut to compensate for the seven hundred, whatever. Now, a couple of months ago, we did our year-end budget projections.
That's what it was.
In departments, yeah, they gave back some money.
Did we jeopardize service?
No, not with that particular cut. We, no. It made it difficult in other areas only because we had, for some unknowns that we, which you guys need to understand, no matter what we do from year to year, if you look back at our department from year to year on what we spend on certain things, it's sometimes drastically different because my whole department lives in a world of unknown. We have no idea from day to day what's going to happen in our department. And we're, I guess, police department, too, but I'm talking for, for cost-wise, we never know from day to day what's going to break. What's going to, really, that's the big one, what's going to break? Because every single area of my department has moving parts, irrigation, plumbing, air conditioners, wells. So, from day to day to day, we have no idea what's going to break. It's completely out of our control. So, what we're going to have to maintain and repair month to month to month, it changes from year to year to year. Some years are a lot better than others. The first year I got here, we had three wells, I think, go out, which are thirty to fifty to a thousand dollars apiece, depending on what goes out in the wells. So, that can wipe out a budget real fast when things like that happen. And that's what I was telling you guys earlier, we're always in that situation. So, from day to day, we don't know. We could have, you know, one day, we could have thirty sprinklers we have to repair. sprinklers we have to repair, one day we have none. One day an air conditioner usually goes, goes out, the next day everything is fine. So, it's always just a day-to-day, um, process. And that's the way it'll always be, there's nothing you can really do about that. What we do, when we create our budget, especially in the parks, the parks maintenance side, which includes some facilities, is go back and look at the past history of the years and come up with the best number we possibly can, based on past history, but it's still a, somewhat of a stab in the dark. Um, we're, we're hoping that's as bad as it gets, you know what I'm saying? I shouldn't say it's bad, it's, it's just, it's just the nature of the beast.
So the adjustment that you made at the end of the, that year was a stab in the dark, based upon potential?
Not the adjustment, we're talking about our budget projections, when we, when I give my budget projections to these guys, we're looking at the past three to five years to see what happened, um, and, and hoping those numbers, and it's, you're, we're usually pretty close, hoping those numbers that we use is enough to cover whatever might happen. We just don't know.
If it doesn't happen, it's a savings. If it does...
Correct.
You have to adjust, else we're not...
Yeah, I mean, the first two years, I was, I was running the department, I was able to give back money, you know, twenty-five thousand and twenty-something thousand first years, which is good, because we can, the general fund can use all the help it can get. Um, this year, that's not possible.
Okay.
Um, and it's, you know, in a couple areas, we're gonna come up short for the unknown things like we're talking about, and for some reason, the gas bill, I, it's, you know, so it's, and again, the way we create the budget is based on past history, that's all we, well, that's all we've got to go on, and you try to account a little bit for increase in cost for, um, products, um, parts and, and things like that. You know, that's, that's the only way we can project what our expenses are gonna be. Same with the income. So, it's just, it's just a constant unknown, is what I'm saying. We just never know.
Any other comments? Any public comments?
A couple of quick comments. Um, I, I hope I didn't sweep through. Um, I didn't hear anything regarding Leroy Jackson Park. Was, was there something that was said with regard to Leroy Jackson?
Um, I mentioned it, but by mistake. There's, currently, there's no plans for any renovations to Leroy Jackson Park, and that is one hundred percent mainly because the, the, the city doesn't own Leroy Jackson Park, and we have a twenty-five-year lease, which I begin, I believe at the beginning, at the end of next year, that lease is up, and we still have not come to any resolution of what's gonna happen at that point. Uh, and most of the infrastructure that's been put in at Leroy Jackson Park, and the tunes of millions of dollars, was done by the city, so it's, it's, it's my, uh, it's my, my opinion that it would be, and until we have some sort of resolution with the county of what's gonna happen with the park, if it happens to end up going back to the park, or we make an, another agreement with them, uh, for lease, or we take ownership, that's not been decided yet, but until it's decided, I think it would not behoove us to put one more penny into that park.
Okay, yes, and exact, that was exactly where I was headed...
Right.
Is to make sure that we didn't put any more capital funding in it until we were sure we wanted to keep it.
Right.
Um, and of course, on the other hand, just because we've put millions of dollars into it, doesn't necessarily mean we should either keep it, either, because it may be that it, the public in general will be better off with the county paying for the maintenance on it, and the upkeep on it, and we might actually save money by not having to spend that maintenance money, but the people could still use it because the county, uh, you know, would be funding that maintenance. So, I, I was, you said all the right words, I appreciate your, your comment, is we're, we're looking at it seriously, uh, and we're not doing anything rash, either assuming one thing or the other. Uh, that's great, uh, I thank you.
Stan, just a comment. Leroy Jackson Park's kinda divided in half. Uh, we have a lease on the north part that has the soccer fields, the tennis courts, and...
Softball fields.
Softball fields. And the actual park, which used to be called Rocket Park, is still maintained by the county.
Yeah.
But they would love to have us do it, but, uh...
Oh, yeah, well, you know, they have their money problems, but hey, our job is to watch out for our money problems first.
I agree. The, and, and Stan, just, I'm not gonna talk too much about that park, because it's currently closed session, or what's gonna actually happen with an agreement with them. So, but I, what I will say is, I understand what you're saying about letting them take it and maintain it, and our citizens being able to use it, which is absolutely true, but what huge problem that could present for us, uh, as Mr. Thomas and some, and, you know, Lori mentioned, is we run a tremendous amount of our city youth programs in that park, so I don't know if you could actually call it a savings, um, by us letting them maintain it and us having to pay them to use it. That could present a whole nother...
Oh, yeah.
Issue.
Well, I mean, if we're making...
If they choose to let us use it.
If, if we're making money off the, not making money, but we're, we're staying even with regard to the programs that we have on the park, that is, you know, I don't consider that necessarily a cost.
Correct.
But you gotta look at the whole thing...
Absolutely.
To make sure that it's not costing us real money out of the pocket, assuming that we got a certain level of programs that are really benefiting our public, as long as, and that's assuming that the county would not also have those same programs. If the county had the same programs at, at the same cost to the citizens, then that's, again, different. So, I mean, you gotta weigh all of those issues in there, because the bottom line, where we are now, we don't have a lot of options on the general fund.
Yeah, I could...
And we just don't.
I could safely say, from my conversations with the leadership at the county, and the, and the park side, that, um, if they came over here, currently, they have zero recreation programs that they offer in our community, so I really doubt if they would send people over here that would maintain and run youth programs in that facility. I, I would have a...
Well, then...
Real hard time believing that.
Then the other option may be, let them own it, run it, maintain it, see if we can't get them to allow us to use it for free. I mean, we are paying, we all pay county taxes.
Uh-huh.
You know, I mean, it's not like, it, we're not paying them to service it, I mean, I, I can...
I, I'd be glad to ask them that, as soon as they reopen the jail.
Oh, okay, well, use my name if you want to.
Okay. So the same taxes that...
I don't see why we should have to pay them to use our park. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, you know, it's just, we pay tax, we pay county taxes.
Right, and, but I was being sarcastic.
As a matter of fact, a lot of people think that the county gets a bigger share of the property tax than they deserve.
Yeah.
So, let, let's not be too willing to pay them money to use what we should be considering our park to begin with.
I, I was being a little sarcastic, but if, if they're, they're taking our jail away, and I, I have no reason to believe why they would come here and run youth programs for our kids, so I, just my opinion.
Well, you know, if you don't ask, you won't find out.
I'll be glad to ask.
Just use Stan's name, though, please.
Yeah, I'll say Stan sent me.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, what else you got?
Uh, the second thing was, at one point in time, there was some discussion about bringing in outside athletic events. Uh, have we started doing any of that, or are we still considering that, or have we assumed that's a bad deal?
No, it's a good deal, and it's something along, that ties into the, um, I've been working with outside people that we've kinda formed, I guess you'd call it, uh, under the Economic Development Committee, like a sports commission that I've been involved with, and yeah, we're absolutely, we haven't been successful, well, we have been, we've been working with the Youth Baseball League, which is actually having a tournament this month, that we're helping them with their tournament. Um, it's always a good deal, because they come here, they shop here, they sleep here, they eat here, which is good for our businesses, is good for our hotels, which is in turn good for our general fund, and good for all the departments involved. Um, so no, that is a major, and I should've put that in there, and I, I just forgot about it, but that's a major focus for my department, is to stay engaged with those people, because the idea is to not only bring ba- baseball tournaments, we're working on a basketball tournament right now...
Okay, great.
To bring thirty-something teams in.
Yeah.
Soccer tournaments, chess tournaments...
Yeah.
All kinds of stuff, but yeah, is it a good idea? It's a fantastic idea.
Because even though the city might not be making direct money off of the parks, or, well, I guess, a basketball, we would, hopefully, we would rent the Kermit He Center for a certain amount of money.
Correct.
But everybody that uses a hotel, or eats in a restaurant, that all makes us money, so...
It's a win for everybody. It's a win for everybody.
By the way, I, I do applaud your efforts, I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Keep it up.
Appreciate it.
I agree.
I third you. I have to do another one.
Any other?
Thanks, guys.
Staff, did you have anything?
I don't know.
Okay.
Are we gonna terminate this at nine-thirty?
Sooner.
I'm missing the basketball game.
Sooner. How many more departments do we have?
Uh, just Public Works.
Do you find that already presented?
Oh, yeah.
Be quick, would ya?
I believe just Public Works.
Be quick.
Twenty-nine, twenty-eight, four in state.
Be quick.
At six-thirty.
All right, here we go, last department.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Public Works presentation.
I, I just have a question before you start.
Sure.
Um, kinda goes along with Public Works. Is the reason PG&E is working along Down Street, getting all their stuff done in case we are able to expand Downs?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, I, I know they've been doing a lot of work the past couple weeks, and it's between Up John and Ridgecrest Boulevards, I, I assume that they are, and they didn't ask for, they didn't ask us for a hundred thousand dollars either, did they?
No, they didn't.
Imagine that.
Uh, Public Works is actually comprised of six divisions, the Engineering Division, the Streets Division, Transit, Wastewater Fleet, and Administration.
Why did we get so dark?
I can't see, didn't see the bottom of my...
Background. That, it's background, but the Engineering operates out of the general fund, the, uh, the, the O-one fund. Streets operates out of the gas tax fund, the O-two fund. Transit operate, operates out of the O-three fund, and the primary, uh, source of funding is the TDA, both Articles Four, Four, Five, and Eight. Wastewater operates, uh, it is a wastewater enterprise, it operates out of the O-five fund, and Fleet Maintenance is, uh, the, uh, the ISF Fund, uh, one forty. Administration Two operates out of the O-one. Can they do that?
It can make the background lighter.
Oh, uh, I've been told they can make that background lighter so light.
Yeah, it's got, you can't, we can't even read our screens, so...
Yeah, it's black.
We can make it lighter here?
Well, Gary'll fix it up.
Gary's gonna fix it.
Cause he's got the original documentation.
It's not getting any lighter.
It's okay, we'll follow along.
You keep going, didn't it? Yeah, I keep going this.
We're gonna go back now, he, uh, I think he has control of it right now.
M equals, M, M equals...
I think M equals...
Mmm.
The slide itself, I'll forget, the diamond slide.
Okay. Okay, well, we're through with that slide, we're going to presentation approach, uh, well, first, we'll, we'll go over program information, the activities and accomplishments, then the resource information, uh, the big M being the money, and equalling the manpower, the materials, and the machinery, uh, then a perspective, some observations, recommendations, and a conclusion. In terms of the Engineering Division, our city engineer is Lauren Culp, and the Engineering Division includes planning, budgeting, design, preparation of bid documents, project management, final map and plan checks, inspections, acting as liaison with current, uh, current COG, Community Development, and Caltrans, as well as FHWA and others. The, the mission statement, I'm not gonna read through this, because it is part of, and will be in the budget document. And then in terms of engineering goals for fiscal year two thousand sixteen, seventeen, they are as follows: to provide quality engineering services to the citizens of Ridgecrest, to protect the health, safety, welfare of the citizens of Ridgecrest through, uh, enforcement of the various local, state, federal ordinances and laws, to work with the county, state, and federal agencies in an attempt to obtain as much funding from these sources as possible, to complete existing authorized projects as matching funds are identified, to continue training and implementation of the Wastewater Division G.I.S., to continue implementation and debt acquisition for Street Division G.I.S., to continue the review and amendments to the Ridgecrest Municipal Code. And, uh, in terms of activities and accomplishments, in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, one parcel, uh, one partial map was recorded, four grading permits issued, a hundred and thirteen encroachment permits were, were issued, twenty-three curb, gutter, sidewalk inspections were made, two hundred and fifty-two hours for counter responses, two hundred and forty hours for underground service alert, sixty-one hours for the hub station work at Daniel Kern, a hundred and one hours for the Walmart project. The, uh, projects that are proposed, city construction projects that are proposed in fall of two thousand fifteen, were the Bowman Road Downs, uh, to Premrose, to Premrose, Radar Avenue, Nevada, to Down Street, uh, Richmond Road overlay, uh, east of Ridgecrest Boulevard, uh, Boulevard, to the fairgrounds, updated seven travels, traffic signals at various locations throughout the city, and the, uh, signage and striping for twelve intersections at various locations. In terms of street design projects for, in current year, were the Drummond Project, North China Lake Boulevard to Chelsea, uh, Down Street Construction Project, Up John Avenue to West Ridgecrest Boulevard, CDB, CDBG at ADA at ramps, the Richmond Bike Path, Bowman Bike Path to the Park and Ride. The, that was all for design projects. Uh, street projects awarded in two thousand sixteen, Regional Surface Transportation Program, uh, when he means awarded, he means programmed, uh, the Downs Avenue Project from West Ridgecrest Boulevard to Up John Avenue, Congestion Mitigation Air, uh, Air Quality Program, Sunland Avenue, which is the new one, uh, from Bowman Road to Dolphin, Dolphin Avenue, those are currently programmed projects, uh, still need, uh, the approval of FHWA. The, uh, street improvement projects for summer of two thousand sixteen will be South China Lake Boulevard Overlay, uh, which is from Bowman Road to College Heights Boulevard, we just, uh, the council just, uh, awarded that contract, I believe, last week. Uh, the Gateway Boulevard Overlay, East, uh, Ridgecrest Boulevard to Church Avenue, the Graff Project from Norman Avenue to North Sierra View, the, uh, Drummond Avenue Widening Project from Inyo, uh, Street to, uh, Down Street, the North Warner Street Drummond Avenue from Hal Street to, uh, from, uh, to, excuse me, from Drummond to Hal Street. And then in terms of the two thousand sixteen, uh, street improvement projects, this is a listing of the, of the various projects that are identified, street improvement, that means they'd be using, uh, TAB funds, and you can read through them there, but it'll be, uh, within the limits stated, um, Sierra View Street, Sierra View Street, Vicki, Vicki, Alice, Sherry, Wayne, Sanders, Cardigan, uh, Jessica, Lakeland, Silver Ridge, Mamie, is that Mamie? And then in terms of traffic, uh, signal construction projects for the summer of sixteen, traffic signal synchronization between Ridgecrest Boulevard and China Lake, and College Heights, and that's dependent on, on the completion, obviously, of the, uh, of the Bowman, uh, project, because that's the last signal we need to have in place, so that we can have it fully synchronized up to, but not including, uh, East Ridgecrest Boulevard at, uh, China Lake, uh, which, because that's a Caltrans intersection. And then the traffic signal at Bowman and China Lake Boulevard. Uh, miscellaneous city projects are the City Yard Improvements, Transit Bus Garage, Sign Reflectivity and Management Plan, continuing with street signs, the, uh, Traffic Volume and Speed Survey Study, yearly engineers' report for lighting and landscape, uh, districts, uh, the annexation of traffic tract six seventy and six seventy-five, uh, into the existing landscaping and land, lighting and landscaping, uh, district, and the New Drainage Benefit Assessment District, uh, for, which would be two thousand sixteen-one, which was just recently introduced to council. Uh, miscellaneous city projects, the Hub Station, uh, that's based on regional funding out in Inyo Kern, multi-year sewer line replacement and repair plan, designed in progress for all Category Five, um, uh, street segments, Community Development Block Ranch, CDBG, contract with the county for ADA Transition Plan and ADA ramps, uh, contract at the county for approval at this point, wastewater treatment, uh, plant expansion, uh, state and federal grant applications, congestion mitigation and air quality program, active transportation program, Regional Surface Transportation Program, Highway Safety Improvement Program, applications have all been submitted. The... Submitted to the state, a systematic safety analysis report program. That's a new program, and we have submitted that application. And we... The engineering's also involved with the review of larger private development projects, site plan review, negotiations, plan checks, inspections, encroachment permits for the Walmart project, SC headquarters remodel and garage construction. There's some irony there. Alzheimer's care facility, the Dartmouth Building, the new Murray Middle School construction and Burroughs High School expansion. And then RFPs that are currently outs for HSIP, CMAC, ATP, and RSTP in response for call for projects. Then in terms of the Street Maintenance Division, our Public Works Supervisor is Les Wood. The Street Crew provides maintenance, repair, and street sweeping services for 262 curb miles. That's approximately 126 centerline miles of streets. This includes repair of infrastructure such as curbs, gutters, sidewalks, drainage systems, signs, and the painting for the markings. In terms of the mission statement, that again, that will be included in the budget document. It's there, but I'm not gonna read that. Street Maintenance Division's their goals for the 2016-17 year are to respond expeditiously to the needs of the community, to identify and mitigate possible street hazards with available resources, street preservation to sections of Irwin Avenue, Wyman Street, El Prado, Los Flores Avenue, Beasley Street, Nancy Avenue, and Cathy Avenue, to continue with the signed inventory project, to resurface North Balsam Street, West Station Street, North Mahan Street, West Coso Avenue, and other locations with coal mixed caps. Activities and accomplishments for 2015-16, they applied 850 gallons of street paint, 1,950 potholes. Using our standard pothole count, were filled either with hot or coal mixed asphalt at various locations. Thirty tons of crack filler were used to fill cracks on Los Flores Avenue, Upjohn, Mamie, Mahan, Hayden, Benson, Jimstone, and Ennio Kern Streets. And for the week of May ninth, and this should've already been accomplished, but street as far as spring pavement rehabilitation within the limits identified was intended for Ennio Street, Kennett, Brienne, Fendrick, Scott, Lauren, Loreen, I guess it is, Marlene, Gateway, Sunland, and Alvore Streets. I cannot read, but let me. I can read. I can get the original document for... For the lower part of that. And that should already have at least been in progress. Let's see, can I take these off? Yes, Ennio, Mamie. No, I can't still get to read those bottom.
Look right here, Dennis. Can you see it over here on the...
Oh, okay. Well, a little better. And then in terms of the spring... Street rehabilitation continued, but for the week of June 1st is they were planning on doing Ennio Street between Eileen and Ennio Kern Road and Purdue Street between Norman and the cul-de-sac. And in terms of the Ridgecrest Transit System, the supervisor, Starla Riddell. The Transit Department transitioned from a demand to a deviated flex route in 2012. The new system, Ridge Runner Transit operates four city routes and one county route within the Ridgecrest and the surrounding Kern area. The main funding for Ridgecrest Transit comes from the State Transportation Development Act, which is a restricted share of the state sales tax. Other sources include Federal Transit Administration programs, Kern County through contract, and a small share from passenger fares. That's again, this is the mission statement. It will be included in the budget document. Not gonna read through it. In terms of program description, the city serves general ridership, including the youth, seniors, disabled riders. Transit services are provided Monday through Friday within the city of Ridgecrest. County Ennio Kern routes and Johannesburg, Johannesburg-Ransburg routes, services is provided once a week. Rider fares remain feasible with the general fare rider at $250 per person and the county rider at $2 per person. The city youth, seniors, and disabled, the fares are $1.25. County fares are $1. That's because they're subsidized under the county contract, incidentally. Fares for Ennio Kern services are $2.50 for general, $1.25 for youth, seniors, and disabled for the Johannesburg and Ransburg services. And the fare is $8 for general and $4 for youth, senior, and disabled. Muddling passes are available as well. In terms of the program description continued, city of Ridgecrest is in partnership with Kern Transit. Ennio-Mona Transit provides intercity services from Bakersfield through Tehachapi, Mojave, California City of Ridgecrest to Bishop and north to Carson City. The city of Ridgecrest now has a connection with Crest Service that runs through Mammoth Lake to Lancaster on a north from Lancaster to Mammoth, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, connecting with Ennio Kern. Funding description, the funding for the city of Ridgecrest Transit System is primarily by the Transportation Development Act. These TDA funds consist of TDA Article 4, TDA Article 8 funding, and also TDA Article 4.5, though it's not listed. And other funding sources include passenger fares, federal grants, operating assistance grants from 5311, interest earnings, and a contract with Kern County. Transit goals for 2016-17 is to replace the city courtyard, east and west entrance gates. Funding by PT Misia and CalOES grants, total $22,110. Install a alarm and lighting system at the city courtyard that fund is provided by CalOES with a grant of $21,565. Install security camera system at the courtyard. Funding is by CalOES with a grant of $23,193. Install security gate camera system at the city hall bus transfer station. It's funded by CalOES grant in the amount of $21,565. And to install two access control store systems, door systems, and new maintenance facility purchase of ten new computer tablets for fleet buses. That's funded by PT Misia with a grant of $6,273. Install security fencing at city hall. That's funded by CalOES grant of $21,565. Replace two older buses with two new buses, funded by TTP, PT Misia grant of $193,510. Replace a third older bus, funded by the 5339 discretionary grant with $117,000 and $117,031 with a city match of $20,653. Total project cost $173,684. Total grants are $1,790,986.
Why is the third bus so much more than the other two?
Probably a larger bus, but let me see.
What's a 5339 grant?
That is a FHWA, I mean, FTA grant.
Oh, thank you.
And I mean, I can get the specifics, but I suspect it's simply a larger bus. And in terms of...
How many people actually... How many people we actually have average in a bus at a time?
I can get that information.
Do we really need large buses?
Well, based on the ridership, I mean, the answer would be, I think, buses we used to run, which were 22, I think, were probably sufficient. But we... Because of the anticipation, the expectation, by Kern Cog and their consultant, that with the deviated fix would come additional riders, the recommendation was for the larger buses that were operating. I believe the last two that she replaced are smaller buses again, though, because of the fuel savings.
They also run the ADA compliant. Did that change size at all when they had to do that, or does that stay?
Well, that stays the same because the spatial requirements for ADA and for wheelchair remain the same in bus irrespective. It just reduces or increases with the larger bus the passengers.
Because if we had more ADA riding. But is she still running that lunchtime route, that straight line?
I guess she is.
That one was busy.
That's probably our most profitable run.
Which one?
There's one that does the straight line.
No, I think that that's covered on an upcoming slide, but I forgot what they call that, but it's the...
It's the lunchtime one. That's what I know would add.
Lunchtime Express, but it's called something, but where it goes from the gate all the way up to Saracose. And it has more riders than any other... I mean, on a per-bus basis than any other route. And then also to establish, this is goals for this year, for the upcoming year. Establish your road safety training coordinator to meet Department of Transportation increasing safety requirements. Implement a marketing strategy. That's one of the things that our trying to allot. They're recommending that we need to increase ridership. We're already on the radio with the announcements. We advertise on our own buses. We do have, like I said, spots in the radio, but they want us to increase our marketing strategy to somehow get the word out there that we run these buses and they, if, you know, check our routes because if it makes sense for you to, instead of commuting, to try and make use of our routes. And then in terms of activities and accomplishments for the present year, transit ridership was at nine thousand, you know, over 9,000, but this is only through February. And I think projected, that'd be about 14,000 for the year. The total revenue vehicle miles were 57,461 miles. Total vehicle hours were over 6,000. Total operating revenue would be $1,460... I don't know if that's a five or a six. 467,591. Total fare revenue would be, that's fare revenue is only $20,706.50. Total cost for county services, we collect $129,000 plus on that. Total operating expenses, $560,000. Fare box ratio is only at 4%, which was the need for the $60,000 from the General Fund. And we... The total monthly average transit trips is about 1,131 riders.
Go back for a minute. So we're putting in 6,000 vehicle hours for 9,000 riders. So that's about 40 minutes per rider, is that right?
Oh, it's long.
Yeah, matter of fact, the routes are established to be 45-minute routes.
Really?
That's what the loops are supposed to be, yeah.
It only takes 10 minutes to go from one end of town to the other.
And if you have to...
Or she's gotta stop.
There's one of them, you have to switch, and you end up like an hour and a half on the bus to go one place.
Well, if you have to do a transfer, that's true.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, I sat with Starla one day and got the best education of my life on our buses. That's why that Lunchtime Express is so popular, which hopefully we can try to find a way to make more of those. But I have questions, but I'll hush for now.
Did you pay the fare?
And then in terms of the... Let's see, I hope the next slide's got the rest of them. No, it doesn't. I guess it was cut off. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Midday Express, that's what they call it. But the... This is the Coyote, and this is through February, but they had... Well, I can't read that. Okay, yeah, they had about 3,400 riders. Road Runner had 1,850. Rattlesnake had about 1,850. The Midday Express, which is only a two-hour run, as opposed to the Road Runner and the Rattlesnake, and the Coyote, which operate all day. It has 716 passengers just in their two-hour run. And the county contracts about 1,200 riders. Now, if you could multiply that midday into the full day, that would pick up considerably. Moving to wastewater treatment and both the collection system and the treatment facility itself, our plant operator there is John Bracken. And the Wastewater Division operates and maintains the sewage collection system and treatment facility in accordance with the health and safety laws and compliance directives issued by the California Water Quality Control Board in La Hada. As an enterprise fund, this budget seeks preservation of its capital base and is prepared on a working capital focus. The alfalfa fields are also a source of income. The mission statement is, will be, part of the budget document. And the... It'll be identified in that document. Terms of wastewater goals for fiscal year 16-17, to accommodate present and future population by concept design and citing an expanded element of the wastewater treatment pipeline, delivery system, and the wastewater treatment plant. To complete the project planning reports for the wastewater treatment plant, continued implementation of the pretreatment program, what they call FOG, fats, oils, and grease, for compliance with the state mandated sanitary sewer management plan, the SSMP, for the control of illegal and harmful substances which interfere with the safe, effective operation at the wastewater treatment facility. Continued routine collection system maintenance, hydro flushing, and visual inspections of the collection system. The wastewater goals continued. The department will continue the geographic information system program. This program will allow the department to upload the line condition and video recordings, flow composites, as well as built-in construction details into the layered database, comply with state audit requirements contained in the SSMP. The department will compile data generated from the CCTV project for the implementation of a repair and replacement program for the collection system. That's ongoing. Activities and accomplishments this year. Wastewater treated 794 million gallons as of December 31st. They work on a calendar year, incidentally, as far as the reporting. Putting the plant capacity at a monthly average of 60%. And that's interesting because when I got here, we were pushing 75% plant capacity, which was the reason it necessitated the new plant just as a matter of capacity. In 2014, the department treated 846. That's in comparison to the 794 the year before. They treated 700, I mean, 846 million gallons with a monthly average of 64%. The department is in compliance with the program mandated by the state to control sanitary sewer overflows, the SSO program. The department responded to one emergency request for service related to sanitary sewer overflows. The department responded to the calls and relieved the hydraulic overload and mitigated the spill effects. The department has compliance with state mandated SSMP, collected GPS data and causation information for reporting to the state database. The department before maintenance, hydro flushing, and visual inspection on 33,498 feet of various sized sanitary sewer collector systems is part of the SSMP. The department added 22,430 feet of video inspection to the layered database contained in the GIS platform. The department has a responsibility for vector and pestilence control, and the department treated 10,912 feet of mainline sewer with boric acid solution for control of pestilence, and responded to eight requests for service from citizens. The department performed installation inspection on 25 new lateral connections to the sanitary sewer and 17 inspections for the replacement of existing homeowner laterals. These inspections provide verification and proper installation as required under the municipal code.
Boric acid is for cockroaches, right?
Yeah, primarily, yes. The terms of the Fleet Maintenance Division, that, the Public Works Supervisor, Les Wood, has a double hat. He's in charge of the Fleet Maintenance Division. Well, instead of the mission, the division services and maintains repairs of over 100 city-owned vehicles and motorized equipment. The vehicles include the city's fleet, police cars, as well as the transit buses. In addition, maintenance is performed in the city equipment, including the equipment use of the Parks and Recreation Department and the Streets Division. In 2015-16, there were 140 preventive maintenance services were performed. Forty-two minor repairs were performed, 15 major repairs were performed. In terms of community development that are, that now fall under functionally, Public Works Department, the community development and economic development, those were covered previously. They're actually a part of the Administrative Services Department now from a functional standpoint. But the development services, planning, and building safety falls under Public Works, though a part of the development services also fall under economic development when there's information required in terms of some of the demographics and properties that may be for sale when that type of information is requested by developers. The mission statement of the... It will be contained in the budget document itself, but that's the mission statement for community development. Major focus is on business retention and expansion of existing business. Business is concurrent with tourism. The Ridgecrest Business Park is under development, along with several other development projects. New housing projects may be proposed, but are pending due to current market conditions and the economic downturn. Code enforcement is included within the Police Department. Public services and community beautification projects will continue to highlight the increased sense of community spirit as defined by the recommendations, the updated general plan. A new zoning ordinance, revised sign ordinance, and five-year revision of the housing plan are anticipated to be completed. The department's responsibilities, including building, safety, and planning. The community development department provides services for proposed developments located within the city's jurisdictions and its... located within the city's jurisdictions and its fringes. This includes all aspects of the site's economic feasibility, design, and compliance with zoning regulations related to the review and approval of proposed developments, inspections to ensure that construction complies with the approved plan, ensuring that the site continues to comply with the development standards after construction is complete. Development engineering plan review section-- no, development engineering plan review overseas and provides utility plan review for the city and private development projects, reviews plans for water, stormwater, sewer services, coordinates with transportation review, conducts pre-design and pre-construction meetings with applicants, and prepares reviews and issues construction, utility, and street permits. In terms of current planning, the current planning activities, including the processing-- processing-- review and process-- or approval of a hundred and ninety permits, coordination with the Planning Commission, coordination with developers, consultation with the city engineer, city code enforcement office, building inspectors, and also counting officers, including the fire marshal. Preparation of Planning Commission staff reports, preparation of any planning commission-- or planning type reports that would go to the city council. The city planner has provided zoning and general plan information. There were a hundred and-- total of a hundred and eighty-seven planning permits. And these are a listing of the various permits. I understand that-- well, they're identified there, the various types of permits. I won't read through them, but those are the type of permits that are considered and reviewed and approved by the planning department. The land developments are down over the-- of years-- since years ago, prior to two thousand and eight, those numbers were a lot greater. In terms of advanced planning, the-- in terms of advanced planning, the advanced planning is involved in animal keeping amendments to the zoning-- to the zoning ordinance, Bowman Business Plan, the housing element to the general plan, and in the median arts committee, as well as an update to the R-2508 joint land use study, monitoring of the general plan implementation measures, or the water efficient landscape ordinance implementation and monitoring. The assessed valuation of real property and building permits issuance is anticipated to increase only slightly. The plan checking services are provided under the same contract as the inspection services with the county. Current housing development has been limited with the pending market conditions. The-- these are actually older. The current information is really just through two thousand and fourteen, but this is what was submitted. So, it doesn't really give you a reflection on two thousand and fifteen, but that's what was submitted. And so, it-- I'm not sure of the relevancy for current year, but that is the trend since two thousand-- through two thousand and fourteen. I understand the building permits issued, the bulk of the-- I mean, since the numbers seem to show a trend that it's increasing. I understand that the bulk of the building permits issued were for solar permits, where people were adding solar projects to their houses. And then in terms of Public Works Department, in terms of resources, the current budget is five hundred and forty-six thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars for the engineering, public works administration. That's engineering and public works administration. Proposed budget is down. It's proposed at four hundred and ninety-two, seven thirty-nine. Streets budget for-- which is comprised of gas tax, TDA, and general fund, it's dropping from three million to just over two million five hundred thousand dollars in the proposed budget. Transit budget is similarly-- there would be a reduction. The current budget is-- was proposed was one point six million dollars, and that's dropping to a little over one point three million dollars. Wastewater is increasing from a six point seven million dollar budget to a nine point one million dollar budget, primarily due to the proposal of the-- well, two things. One is definitely the-- for our first and probably a second and maybe even third street project, where we're going to actually reconstruct or replace, I should say, sewer lines. The first project, I think I mentioned in the opening of the-- the opening budget presentation, is that segment between Downs and Church, which I believe by itself is over two and a half, maybe even close to three million. We have to bid it first. And then also, that's with the idea that we will go into, we'll send out RFPs and get into the budget, the consultant services for the actual design of the new wastewater treatment plant. And as you may recall, if we go with a tertiary plant, that plant's estimated to be fifty-five million dollars. If it's-- if the council were to decide not to do a tertiary and do a-- do a secondary plant like we have right now, that's a cost of forty-five million dollars. Typically, your design cost is ten percent of your construction cost. So, if you add to the three million dollars, ten percent of either the forty-five or the fifty-five million dollar plant, it's a considerable sum, which is why the increase in the budget. And we-- the fleet maintenance budget under the one forty ISF is being reduced from five twenty-eight to five seventy-nine. And some of that is with the idea that police does maintain. They actually have some of their maintenance outside. They do that with an outside contract. And in terms of prospective streets, I didn't fill in some of the blanks on there, but the-- in terms of the past, Brian, and when I say past, I'm talking about prior to Mezurell and prior to the availability of TAB funding, we were very limited in terms of our street maintenance. We were limited to filling potholes and patching the-- and also filling the cracks. As far as street maintenance, that's about all we could do, maybe some black seals, and the-- and relying on whatever we could rely-- whatever monies could be obtained through program projects. And presently, though, that's changed with Mezurell and with the TAB funding. We're able to-- and you saw the listing of the projects, but we've significantly been able to increase the number of streets that we can-- that we can actually resurface, either with the micro paving or even with overlays. We've been overlay projects. We're relying on TAB funding. Some of your micro servicing and whether it's a micropaver, whether it's a cape seal, that's also done with a combination of either TAB or L funding. We've also been able to use both L and TAB funding for us to be able to provide match funding for the program projects. That even includes the, you know, recently reconstructed West Ridgecrest Boulevard. And we will be looking for Mezurell and TAB funding for the two programmed projects for the double-- well, two components of the Downs project from up John Ridgecrest Boulevard. And our prospect with Mezurell continuing and with still having available TAB fundings is much the same. We want to continue down the list. We want to follow our PMS, and we want to continue working on the streets in town to significantly upgrade our pavement condition index. As the council, I think, is aware, we have a PMS study that's underway at the present time. And when that's done and reported to the council, I-- my expectation with the work that's been done the last three, four years now, even preceding Mezurell, as far as some of the micro surfacing projects, I expect that the overall, I believe it was twenty-three point seven PCI out of a hundred, has increased significantly. I hope that that-- my expectation is that that PMS will show that. In terms of compliance, there's still a concern. As you-- if you ever will read through the-- your traffic-- your section on public safety, the name that-- at least the title, the individual that's referred to the most is the traffic engineer. As a city this size should have not only a traffic engineer, but a traffic engineer staff comprised of at least of a traffic engineer and two traffic technicians. We don't have that. The Public Works Director, it says, may by default act as traffic engineer. I've served as traffic engineer for many years on a much larger scope than the city has, and I wear that hat on an as-needed basis, which is probably at least weekly. But what we don't do is we don't do patrol of our streets. We don't actually actively look out for where cracking occurring, where potholes are. Those are reported to us, or as the streets or PD actually sees it to make aware of us. But if you had an active traffic engineer and engineering staff, the reason I say ye and oh is you have two aspects of traffic. You have traffic engineer and traffic operations, where they're actually out there. We have to have our streets crews pulled from the street crews activities to act as traffic operations. A city this size should have an active, at least two-man crew that does all your signage, your striping, your markings. We don't do that. We have to pull away from our streets crews to be able to actually fill that. But we don't do patrolling. We don't really have the ability to do planning. We don't do the necessary studies we had that would even help us with grant funding. We don't do night driving, because that's very important, particularly with what we're-- with the mandates for retro reflectivity of our signage, even though we've got the meters that tells you. That's not the same as visual night driving. We are active on our sign inventory. We hired a consultant to do that. They have a-- they already have-- their report has been submitted, so we're out acting off that report for our sign inventory update. Then there's the program management. There's design. There's construction management. We don't have dedicated construction manager. We don't have a dedicated public work inspector. Our engineering tech doubles in review and inspections. We don't have, you know, our own surveying crew. We can put one together. We have two licensed surveyors among us, three, excuse me, three. But we just grab anyone to be-- to hold the rod and those types of things. And we-- the PMS updates, where I've worked before, we could do those in-house, but we don't have that capability because we don't have the staffing. So, that's why we have to send that out every three years for consultants to do. The-- in terms of positions that we don't have that would be-- that could serve the city well, I mentioned the traffic engineer, a complete design team, a dedicated public works inspector, a complete survey crew. We have to send out for that. In terms of policies, I think that when and how to have the uptime, I'm kind of working on this in the background, but our public works, including our streets and traffic, those-- our policies need to be updated. I've got a work in progress on that, but it takes time to sit down there and complete it. The transit, I know that they have a in-progress policy that they need to complete. Fleet needs to do one for various reasons, but one of the things, and Jason had alluded to it in the past, is one thing that your enterprise accounts can accommodate that our fleet account can't, and that's preventive maintenance. That's very important in order to extend the lives of the vehicles we have. They're very good about it, but I know that John, when you see that hydro flushing, they do it on a routine basis. They do preventive maintenance on all our sewer lines, which is probably why some of them have lasted as long as they have. And there is a mandate that's required on the bus side, on the transit side, to do preventive maintenance. And I wish we were in a position, along with what Mr. Patton had indicated, if it's got moving parts, it's guaranteed that you're gonna-- you're gonna have to replace or fix those equipment. And the more preventive maintenance, the longer you can defer that type of repairs or replacement. And-- but we're just not to the point in our budgets, particularly for the general fund, to do that. And then trying to look here-- oh, we have some cities comparisons, which I might get to here in a second, as far as where other cities are in terms of their budgeting for streets. It's not apples and apples, and you'll see why in a moment. It'd be darned if I could read that last thing there. It says something here. Oh, consequences. There are significant consequences when you don't have dedicated personnel for traffic, and actually for streets programs as well. And there are penalties associated with that. And I have a chart that kind of indicates what those are, particularly in terms of-- and I'll return to that when we get to that particularly-- particular chart. In terms of observation recommendation, there-- this is just in terms of observations in public works budgets. We do, particularly in terms of the streets, because TDA, first and foremost, finances transit. That has not been steady. There's been uncertainty. There's been years that they've actually withheld the staff, which is about twenty-five percent of the transit budget. Or when they do that, then we just have enough to pay for transit, and then streets get short cut. And so, it's just an indication that there isn't a necessary consistency on the allocation, particularly in years when there's been fluctuation in the sales taxes associated with gas. And there now is this requirement for the fair box match, which is costing us sixty thousand dollars a year. And in terms of-- in terms of wastewater, just an observation or a comment, we will be sending out RFPs for the wastewater facility, the actual design for the improvements. And that-- but that'll follow the certification of the EIR, which is coming the first week in July. And then, you know, with that, there will be a completion and a follow-up total report from the consultant that we already have, Provo Long Pritchard, on the, you know, update and the final project report, they call it, for the-- for the plant before we would move forward with the RFP and then the design for the new plant. And then contingency, this is actually what Mr. Patton had indicated, is if you're running, if you have systems and you have machinery in your budget, you really should operate with a ten percent. And I know we never had. And I know when I was with the county for twenty years, when I would approach the board of supervisors with our budgets, they-- and I ran twenty-three budgets. They sort of called me Mr. Budget over there because it was required for all the county service areas. They all each have zones of benefit. Each zone was benefit. They couldn't be compiled. They had to be have their own separate budget because state law. So, right there was a dozen of the budgets, plus I had the airports, and I had the utilities, and I had the roads operations, and they had various budgets. But anyhow, bottom line is, the board of supervisors, I tell them too, I need ten percent. And they told me, no, it's-- you need ten-- when something breaks, come back to us, and we'll find the money. Or if it's an emergency, do an emergency, and then after the fact, we'll try and find the money. So, I understand the, you know, boards, in this case councils, particularly with our budget, why we can't put ten percent in there, particularly in the general fund capacity. But it's just a pitch that, and a kind of a recognition. It's kind of tough when, as Mr. Patton indicated, you're going day-to-day, and you're just hoping something doesn't break, because if you don't have a contingency to deal with it, we have to come back to council and ask, you know, to find the money that's necessary. And then just another observation that without Mezurell and when TAB goes away, we really would have no mechanism for matching funds for any program projects where we would-- if we were to be successful in our applications, we wouldn't be able to put up the match without a continuation of Mezurell and TAB. And the-- what happens there is, is we're losing our leverage, because for eleven cents on the dollar, we get the other eighty-nine cents, and we just wouldn't be able to do that without match money, which means if you-- without Mezurell, we'd have to cut something else in the general fund, the already short general fund budget, to make that match for leveraging our dollars. And in conclusion, but I'll go in-- after the conclusion, I do intend to go into a few slides that are in the appendix. Appreciate the council's support. I know you've been very supportive of Public Works, and appreciate that. It will be another challenging year, but a busy year. We'll be doing a lot of street works this year, and we do have high expectations. The appendix, this is probably the one I wanted to show you, and I can't read it myself. Can you read that, Ty? This is-- what this was, was this is stale data. It's five years old, but it's still relative. And that was showing you comparable cities and what their annual budget is. But more importantly, I was-- this was to reflect what their streets budget is on an annual basis, and then-- And then there at the bottoms, Ridgecrest's annual street budget. I can't really read the numbers, but there is a reflection that we just do not have the, the, the budgets that other cities are, cities our sides have. And there is also the reflection that we're not necessarily comparing apples with oranges because many, some of those cities, and they're shown in the footnotes, their, their public works departments may also include other things. They may include, some of the, the cities actually have their own utilities. Some of the cities' parks, particularly the parks themselves, not the recreation component, but the parks are under their, their public works department. The, they actually run their own trash and recycling operations. They don't have, they don't consult. So I'm not saying you're necessarily a, it's, it's apples and apples, it's more apples than oranges. But the, the overall, from an overall standpoint, I don't believe you're, that the city of Ridgecrest is quite up to the par with Paso Robles, Pointe Monimie, can't read, Santa Paula, there's Monrovia, and there's, I think that's it. And then in terms of the street network, this is just kind of a reflection of where we're at and what you're going to be seeing as far as revised PMS. Last PMS indicated that from a local collector standpoint, there were over 15 million, well, 15.8 million square feet of collector streets that we need to maintain. The length is approximately 83 and a half miles. Arterial secondary roads, that's 9.2 million square feet, length of 36.5 miles. The total replacement cost, if you bring all these things up to 100 PSI, that would be a cost per, per square foot would be $4.50, it says, for the local collector streets, $7 a square foot for the arterial secondaries. Total amount would be 135, 135.8 million dollars. The recommended funding, though, I'm just, these are, these slides have been extracted from their actual PMS. That was the PMS that was done by Will Dan in 2012. What they actually came up for a recommendation, which is what led to the 1.5 million dollars that was expected to be budgeted for streets for Mezural money, was if, if the, the city of Ridgecrest were to provide 5 point, $5 million for funding for three years in a row, that'd be $15 million of TAB funding to go to streets for years one through three, then the city should have 1.5 million dollars a year budgeted for 15 years. And that would bring the PCI up from the 23.7 to a PCI of 58.7. Well, in fact, we haven't spent $5 million a year, though we've spent some decent TAB money and we've had some good program money, we haven't been able to spend the $5 million a year for streets. And we have not spent or been able to allocate 1.5 million dollars a year of Mezural money for the streets. But we've made significant progress on our streets at this point. And then in terms of worst-case scenario, there, this is just showing how their recommendation, how the expenditure should go based on expending street maintenance money. And they're talking about the worst-case, only 15% of the money because you, and I have to repeat this because I've been stopped at the post office and I've had people that have heard me say this and they said, you're crazy. And I've had discussions with them because they said, we've got roads where you need to spend all your money. And I said, well, the whole point of pavement management system is that we need to take care of the roads that haven't deteriorated first, then we get around to the roads that have. And I said, when we run out of money, we run out of money because we have to seek program money for that. And she said, well, that's just not right. And so we spent about 20, 30 minutes, I've done that several times now at the post office. It's these sunglasses. And unfortunately, it makes me recognizable, I think. And they, but anyhow, wait, this is appropriate way to expend Mezural dollars, is 60% toward the streets before they ever get to a, a core or bad condition. And then when they're rapidly deteriorating, but before they really got down into that poor condition, 25%. So 85% of your funds are trying, is for, are for preservation. And then the worst-case 15. And my recommendation, when you get there, save that money to let it be match money, you know, against programs, program projects. And let me see, what else do I have here? Oh, this is again from their study, and this is where we were at back in 2011. We had an average PCI across town, and this is kind of where they're at based on their scores, PCI and percent wise, but we had an average PCI of only 23.5. And that's really, that's not good, okay? And then, well, this is just, just an idea of how, again, how you, I thought I replaced that slide because that's an actual slide of how you expend your money on the types of roads. That was borrowed from Tulare County on the matrix they use. We would start with a blank slide and then we would indicate what roads. But the way that works is, since it's up there, the way that works is, is you identify from your pavement management study, the streets that are the highest volume and the highest PCI. And which sounds backwards to the people that I've discussed this with, is you spend that money first. I mean, you say you have the X amount of money. And then you've already identified all your streets that have been surveyed and you place them in any of these 15 categories. And that's the streets that are in excess of 5,000 ADTs, that should be AADTs, annualized the traffic, annualized average daily traffic. And you, and your PCI above 70. Put that, that's where you put your first dollars in number one. And then as you, the average daily traffic is less and the PCI is, is less, you go into a lower category. And you do that till you go one, two, three, four, five, six. And wherever you run out of money, you run out of money. That's, and unfortunately, your worst streets are down there in your seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 categories. But that's how you actually work a PMS strategy. These are actually the specific strategies for PCIs and their individual groupings, whether it's AC or whether it's desert mix, which over in the valley we call it RMAS. And then these are the different costs for the different types of, cost per mile, based on the various methods, whether it's a fog seal, black seal, chip seal. And we're doing the chip seal equivalents when we do cave seals now and micro-surfacing. And that's something that's acceptable here because this is borrowed from county. And counties can do chip seals with impunity, but cities can't do chip seals because of the number of bike riders and older cycle riders and the number of folks that will, chips will fly up, break their windshield and they're, they have a problem. And I think I've told you before, it was kind of interesting. We used to actually budget when I was with the county. We used to put a fund in there to replace the, the, the windows that possibly could be damaged. Because in an ideal situation, you've already used rubber foot rollers, you've rolled that thing, you swept the thing, and you've rolled it again with steel rollers. And hopefully there shouldn't be any chips, but it doesn't work that way. And so, so you do have a fund. And when the claims come in, we, we would pay those. But I had one guy call me one day and he asked me where we were, where we were paving next week. And I kind of asked him why. And I think I've told you this before. And he said, because I have a chip in my windshield. So anyhow, there are those types, types of people out there. Oh, I guess I don't have any, I thought I had one additional slide. I guess I don't. That concludes the, I guess I can't bring it back. That concludes, includes the presentation and we'll bring it back if you have any questions on it.
I had just had the one on the PCI that we were talking about. If we did the, the plan and get our PCI up to 53.7 or 57 point, whatever it was in the 50s, isn't that still a fail?
Pardon?
Isn't that still failing?
It's, no, that's, it's above poor condition. I wish I could bring a chart back up. Matter of fact, I don't know if I have the chart that actually indicates the...
I, I saw it, but we kind of went by it. Because I, I know, I mean, 23 is obviously horrible. And I know if we did the 5 million and above...
What it is is you want to have it above 40. Anything above 40 is acceptable.
Okay.
I won't say it's great, but it's acceptable. Because if you've seen the chart I've shown in past presentations, I could have him bringing it up. He can go into my thing and I could bring one up that shows you that. But you got a, the kind of a, it's geometric, parabolical. It goes out there straight for a number of years and then when it starts to deteriorate, it goes fast. And the idea is, is you catch it in that rapidly deteriorating before it gets down to that 40 level. Because every dollar spent above that, relatively speaking, is costing you a dollar. Every dollar, every, all the repairs below that is costing you $5. So it's five times as greater to do those repairs.
Mr. Spear, in reference to the work that we've done last year and what you propose to do this year, where would we fall at in reference to the chart that showed we were at 23.5? Do you anticipate us coming up above that?
Oh, definitely.
And that was in 2012?
I, I wouldn't be surprised if we're not at least at about a 35 and maybe even higher, based on the work we've done. Because see, the last PMS was done in 2012 and it's being done currently right now. So I have high expectations that we're at least above the mid, mid 30s. And I, and with the work, unfortunately, I mean, we're required to do the PMS every three years. It used to be five, but now it's three, I think. So we're a little bit behind. But the, the work that's going to be done, that we're actually doing now and the work that we're going to do in this upcoming year, 16, 17, unfortunately, that's not even going to be accounted for. Because wherever we're out in the PMS, by the end of this next fiscal year, we're going to even be higher than that.
So then we would be still maybe categorized as not very good?
Well, I think we're going to be, by the end of this next year, I actually believe we're going to be in the 40s, which means we're not where I'd like to be. We're not going to be at that 58 or 53, whatever it said on that chart. But we're going to be much, much better off than we were in 2012. And we'll be out of the poor category. We're going to be up there in still the rapidly deteriorating, if you will. But we've done, I think that's going to apply mainly to the local roads, which we still want to, which we're making a great effort this year to get out there in the residential streets, which in the past, we've been, our focus has been the arterials and our collectors, our secondary streets. And I think we've just about hit every major collector in town at this point, well, with the exception of Downs and with the exception of South Norma, which we intend to keep, to get to with TAB dollars.
Can I, just one more quick one, Mrs. Manamann?
Sure. As many as you want, sir.
Okay, I talk real fast, 8:20. In reference to the PM maintenance that you, that we do, are we mandated by any agency or regulations that we have to do PM? Or is that something that...
Oh, the PMS?
Yes.
Yes, we're regulated by, well, what it is, is the federal law mandates the state and the state's to pass through for any federal dollars. So to comply with the federal and to, because they actually pass the money on down to locals, Caltrans requires that we have a PMS as well. So we have to operate based on the pavement management system. Yes, we do.
So did we go down in reference to the services that we will render in reference to PMs?
To go down?
Yes. Because that looked like on the budget numbers you showed that it was, was it a decrease?
In terms of street maintenance?
No, no, I'm talking about sewer.
Oh, sewer? Oh, no, we've gone down. But no, that, that is, I thought you meant the PMS, the pavement management system.
No, I'm sorry, Dennis, I'm sorry.
But in terms of our, the, that's, that's just based on the flows. In other words, the, then being in the 700, what is that? What's under a million? 700 and some thousand gallons, no, millions, yes. 750 or whatever it was, million gallons, that is a reduction of the 864 from the year before. And like I said 10 years ago when I came here, we were, we were at 75%. Now we're at 60%. And because the flow, because of the water conservation ordinance that were, that were passed, oh, actually several years ago preceding the mandates from the state that we're in right now, the, it, it caused a decrease in flows. And we were seeing a reduction of about 12, 15% a year for about three years in a row. Then now it's finally flattened out. And so it's, it's in response to that. Our concern now is on some of the flatter lines, would there be so much flow, I mean, so much of reduction in flow that we don't have the quantities to...
To pick up the numbers?
Well, well, no, to move, to actually move the solids, you know, downstream, that can, that can become a problem.
That's the problem with, with trying to capture gray water. We looked at infrastructure and if we capture gray water in most of the houses, then we're not going to have the flow in the, in the sewer lines to push the solids down. So there's, there's, you know, there's, there's pros and cons, but you've got to have enough, you've got to have enough fluids going through the sewer lines to move the solids or you're going to have a problem.
You didn't record that, did you?
You need to drink more liquids.
No steak for you.
I'm done, I'm sorry.
Anything, Mike?
Yeah, how, how do we determine what streets we're doing each year?
PMS, the pavement management system, and that's, that's kind of interesting because we've been working off to 2012. And I want to, I think I'll back up just so I can, you know, let you understand that one table where, let's see, let me see if I can find it real quick.
Because I get, I get people coming to me all the time wanting to know why their street isn't done, or why this street was done and this one wasn't.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and answer that. I want that one chart, and it's the same one the council member acting had referred to. Oh, did I already go past it? No, there it is, right there. When the PMS was done, a normal pavement management system study would not have included this $5 million for year one to three. When the, when that study was done in 2012, prior to presenting it to the council, they presented it to the infrastructure committee. One of the council members that was on the infrastructure committee asked, in anticipation of TAB funds becoming available, asked the consultant to do a special study. They said, now with the information you have from the PMS and not using the chart I showed you earlier where you're supposed to place the money in the best streets first until you run out of money, they said, irrespective of that, can you come up with a five-year list of projects that if we spend X amount of dollars a year and for five years, and this is for capital projects, not for PMS, what would that list be? And so they originally did a five-year study and then because the, the belief that there wouldn't have be five years worth of money, they changed that to a three-year study. And what we've been, but that was a list of projects that needed to be reconstructed. In other words, they were beyond just the type of maintenance you would do with PMS. And that's where that $5 million for three years came from, is that was doing your worst first, which is not a PMS policy. That was a request of the infrastructure committee or the council to identify a list of streets that if you had $5 million a year, where would you put it to help the PCI? And that's where that list came from. And that's what we're doing with the TAB money. Now simultaneously, we're using Mezural and TAB money to attack the other PMS streets, particularly this year, that are strictly PMS. In other words, we're following their, their PMS guidelines for maintenance. I don't know if I answered that, but we have, we have two lists and they contradict each other. The first list that was requested to be done by the consultant had nothing to do with the proper administration of dispersment of funds for PMS money. But it had everything to do with using the data in the PMS to develop a list of the worst-case streets for the use of TAB monies. But we follow PMS, is what I'm saying.
You've put that list out before.
Yes, I have.
Is it on our website?
I can make it available on the website, yeah. It's an approved list. It actually went to, matter of fact, yeah, just following up, you jogged my memory. But that list was, we couldn't afford it. I, I don't know whether it was a five-year list or if it was a three-year list, but we couldn't afford it. And what we did was we had just begun experimenting with micro-surfacing. And we got, we actually had the contract, a light went on... had the contract, a light went on, and it was working out so well with our first street done out here in front of the Bank of America, first micro paving in the city of Ridgecreswell from Ridgecres Boulevard to Upjohn, and then followed by the Cape Seal on Upjohn from China Lake Boulevard to Downs. They worked out so well, we had less, and I met with her too, but we talked to our, the two contractors that were doing our micro-surfacing, and asked if any of the streets on that list that had been developed by the consultant could actually be, or if we could do that work with the micro-surfacing process as opposed to an overlay, because overlays are over three, four times as much. And so, and that's one of the reasons we couldn't fortify your list. And there were the streets they couldn't do, they told us they couldn't do, the streets they could do, they said, yeah, we think we can. So, I came back with a modified list to council, and the streets that we could do with micro-surfacing, we took out the number that the consultant had in there for overlays, and we put micro-surfacing, and that's how we approached it, to be able to actually accomplish. We're actually finishing the last of the three-year list now, and that's why we're able to go back out and follow the PMS into the, to the residential streets now, this, this year, this paving season, which overlaps two years, and continuing into the spring of seventeen.
I have a question. I believe if I counted correctly, you said seven times, we don't do, we don't have that kind of work. And I'm wondering, what do we, what are we giving up by we don't do, we don't have? Are there grants that are available that we might have gotten had we been able to do or do that? Are there, what are the...
Well, I think it's, well, no, there are, it is possible that we do not receive all the grants, because if you had a traffic study, one of the things we customarily received on an annual basis, and the police, they make use of this, but the, the, the traffic grants, for the traffic safety grants, we used to get those every year through the traffic department. Now, our police chief, he has folks that apply for those grants every year, but we just don't have the staff to keep up from them. But those are the traffic safety grants, we used to get on a routine basis, we used to use it for different things. I know that they aren't necessarily that much money, so one of the things we used to do, because in the county, we were responsible for all the signage strapping, the signings, striping and markings at all of the schools, well, we had over eighty-four schools we were responsible for in the county. County's road system is thirty-five hundred miles. Over one-third of that is urban, the same as we are here. And what we used to, we used to always get the complaints, people speeding around schools. And so, we used to use our, now, every year, we'd pick up a different, that portable, the speed trailer, we called it, the speed wagon, we'd haul the trailer from school to school, and it would reduce the speeds, because a lot of people, they just weren't aware. I mean, they really weren't, because when they saw the trailer flashing what their mileage, what their miles were, they slowed down. Well, I don't think people necessarily intentionally speed around schools, they're just really not aware until it's brought to their attention. So, we don't get, we just don't have the, you know, the staff to actually work out that. That's one thing I'm trying to work it for. We have a very good grants person, doesn't work in public, it works in public works, but not in, in traffic, and I hope to, to see if she has any time available to help us explore those grants. But the slide I don't have, and I've had in previous ones, I've got to go back to see why I got cut out, but the, and I don't know, because I prepared this, I must have cut it out, but I have a slide that shows the, I wonder if I put it on my general one instead? I wonder if I did, but...
I guess my concern was that if we are not doing all these things, the benefits may be greater to have a person who does a couple of things to get all that, all those dollars.
Well, it's not just getting the dollars, it, what's more importantly, and I can't believe I don't have it on this PowerPoint, I remember having the slide, I just don't know where I put it, because it's not on the, the general presentation either. But the, the thing that is, should be more of a concern, is risk liability to a city. I know that you have public safety, but it's the car accidents.
That's my second part of that question.
Because if you have fatalities, you can, you can, you can count on, it's two million per. That's going to be what your cost is, is, and the, my biggest concern is, when I, when I got here, was the fact that I asked, I went, first thing I asked Joe, you know, Pollock, I mean, he was here when I, when I first came on board, and I asked Joe where the traffic studies were, and he said, what traffic studies? And I said, well, you know, there weren't studies for your stop signs, because I says, some of them just really don't look plausible. And he said, he didn't have any studies. And I said, well, you can't install a stop sign unless you've done a warrant study, that's state law. And so, he said, well, check with PD. I checked with PD, and no one knew anything about any warrant studies. And that's always caused me a concern, because the only thing that, that can substitute in the place of a warrant study is when you have designated through streets. Because if you have designated through streets, then it's, as a matter of designating that street as a through street, all streets that, that cross that, they're required to stop, so then you don't have to have a traffic warrant. Well, I asked the, the assistant city manager, who was the former police chief at the time about that, and he had done those when he was a sergeant. So, he gave me a listing of the through streets. Well, that takes care of some of my concerns, but it doesn't take care of still a large number of intersections that are four-way or multi-way stops. Now, the reason I bring that up, and why it's a concern to me, is the, if anyone that is, is out there, and there's an accident, and you get a plaintiff's attorney that was aware of these laws, and they ask you, let's see your warrant study, we want to see if this really was supposed to be a four-way intersection, I mean, a four-way stop intersection or a multi-way, or, you know, two-way, and it's, and, you know, there was a study that was a two, that was, said it should have been a four-way, it only remained a two-way. They, they'll want to see that, and if you're, if you don't have a study, and you've got a four-way, it doesn't matter if you could have done a study and it was a four-way or not, they're going to ask you for your checkbook. And, and to give you an example, this is, this happened twice, when I was, again, wearing many hats, but one of them was a traffic engineer, there was a, I was on Avenue Fifty-Six and just on the west side of, on the frontage road in Early Mark, there was a two-way stop intersection, and because of the traffic, we did a traffic warrant study. Warrant study said it should be a four-way. It said both the people on the frontage road should stop, as well as the folks on Avenue Fifty-Six. And so, we went, we took the traffic study to the board of supervisors. Board of supervisors, apparently, one of the members of the board of supervisors had a friend that had a packing shed on the frontage road, and his, the folks worked at, that worked at the packing shed felt they'd be inconvenienced by having to stop for the folks on Avenue Fifty-Six. So, when that came before, he managed to get two other votes on the board. And so, when we, we took it to council and said, we've done a, we've completed a warrant study, and a recommendation of staff is that there be a four-way stop, they, the board said, well, thank you very much, we appreciate your study, but no, it's going to remain a two-way. Well, a couple of years go by, and a man and his niece get nailed by a fellow coming through there, and it should have been a four-way stop, and they, they died. And so, we're, I'm in the discovery hearings, the city, the county has many members of their county council, but they do not have a member of the, they, they don't have a litigator, so it was an outside litigator, special counsel hired by the council, by the county to be litigator. He's sitting next to me, the attorney for the plaintiff's on the other side of the table, and the defendant's also on the other side of the table, and there were some other people in the room there, including the recorder. And so, he asked me, he said, well, he'd asked to see the files for a discovery. He pulls out that warrant study, and he says, I see there was a warrant study. And I said, yes. And he said, well, what was the results of the warrant study? I said, well, that there should be a four-way stop. And he said, well, did you take this to the board? And I said, yes, I took it to the board. He said, well, how come there's not a four-way stop there? And I said, well, the board thanked us for the study, and they, but they said that it would remain a two-way, a two-way, a two-way stop, as far as the signage. So, at that point, the, the special counsel for the county tapped me on his shoulder, and he told the plaintiff's attorney, he said, well, I'd like to take my client out in the hallway, he'd like to have a discussion. He said, are you telling me that you did a study that said it should be a four-way? And I said, yes. He said, you took that to the board? I said, yes. And he said that, and they told you that, thank you very much, and they left it at two, and I said, yes. He said, well, all I want you to do is go back in there and open your checkbook, and let him fill in the blanks, and that cost the county over four and a half million dollars. And the same situation in the north part of the county, it cost them again, because they wouldn't respect the requirements for studies or, or the recommendations in that fact. Here, we have the opposite situation. We have, we have some, particularly in terms of stop signs, we have some intersections that scare me, because in my experience, I scratch my head when I see the, one of the warrants is the, the traffic in either direction, and I see the disparity, and I have to scratch my head as to why they're four-ways at all, and there aren't any warrant studies.
Well, then, given that, and given the opportunities that we would have for grants, it would seem that we need to look at the opportunity to fill some of those, or at least half of that position, to see if we can get those grants and avoid that kind of situation. I'm not telling you how to run your department, but it would seem to me that that might be a logical thing to look at.
When we get to a good, better, a better budget situation, I think that definitely a traffic engineer should be in the, in the, in the future, because just as a point of information, if you ever read through the public safety section in municipal code, you'll see the traffic engineer's name mentioned more than any other name in the, in that particular section of the code.
Any other council comments?
Stan Ratoro. There's a lot of good information in that presentation. I was wondering, is it going to be put on the website, the city website, so people can get a chance to actually read it?
Absolutely.
In the near future?
Yes, I would like to add that one slide, though. We'll put this on, and then we'll replace it, because there's a few slides, including that slide as, as far as the risk you have in terms of property damage and personal liability on accidents. I'd like to add that slide, but we'll put this one on, we'll post it. Tonight? Can we do that tonight? Well, at least first thing Monday, if we can't do it tonight. And the, but what I'll do is, I'm going to add a couple of slides to the appendix, and I'll have it replaced after I add those slides.
Okay. I can't hear worth a damn anymore, but my eyesight, quite frankly, is better than what it was when I was a teenager, and I could read about one-fourth of the slides, so it would be really nice.
I'll change the background before we post it.
Well, yeah, the background didn't help at all, and there were, there were some slides that it was mostly nothing in font that looked like it was a number ten or a number twelve in the middle of this big area. I mean, it, I could not read them, and I apologize for sounding negative, but I couldn't read them.
Neither could we.
I couldn't either, frankly.
Okay. Anyway, it would be nice to have the information before our next meeting, so I could find out what I was supposed to learn tonight.
We'll do that. No, we could, we could get that posted, and Gary can actually take my PowerPoint and change the background, right? Yeah, I think we'll, before it's posted, we can have Gary, because he has the actual document, and I'll have it in bright and lightning.
I would greatly appreciate that, and I'm sure a lot of other people would too. A question about the sewer lines. The, I'm assuming a lot of this will come back up again when we go through the formal budget hearing, but at one point in time, we were talking about doing sleeves to repair most of the sewer lines, and the impression I got tonight, when you were talking about California, which I think is one of the worst, I got the impression that maybe that wasn't going to be a sleeve, that's going to be digging up the whole road?
That's correct. Matter of fact, I believe that's true of almost all the category five streets.
And how many category five streets?
I don't have that map for me, but I tell you what, we can have it available for the...
Is, is there a plan in the works that gives all that information in one area?
I believe, uh...
I mean, at one point in time, we were contracted to actually put...
We are, and I believe I mentioned in our, in the opening or the introduction, they're behind, but what they do is, they decided to take, and that's the consultant, they decided to take things out of sequence, because I was pushing them. They were supposed to have, we were actually supposed to do work in the streets in this current year, and they hadn't done that. And what they were supposed to do is, through all the videoing work, they were supposed to first develop the streets, and they did, they have their various category streets, but they were supposed to develop a work plan, which was, would be like, you could call it a five-year capital project plan or whatever, and they were supposed to develop a work plan. They didn't do that. So, I was, I talked to our city engineer, and I said, they're behind, they're seriously behind, because we've got the money, and we need to move forward with this, particularly the category fives. So, what they did is, they put their work plan aside right now, and they're actually moving forward with several projects that are category five, that are so severe in nature that they need to be replaced. And one of those projects is the church project, and they're actually completing their design. It's almost a hundred percent complete, to the point that in the next month or so, we're going to be able to advertise that for construction on that segment between, on church between Downs and China Lake. But they have a couple others, they're also moving forward with improvement, ahead of themselves, and the reason they're ahead of themselves is because they're behind on delivery of their work plan, and I'm not real happy about that. And they're, so they're pushing forward with some improvement plans, so we can get out there and make progress, even though they haven't delivered the work plan that they were actually supposed to do, on my recollection, a year ago.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it, I mean, if there are severely damaged sewer lines, we need to get them fixed, for sure, but it would also be nice to have that plan, so that we can figure out what we're doing, not just this year and next year, but at least five years out, because I've been told that we're going to do another rate study in the near future, and we can't do a rate study until we know what work we're going to do, it seems to me. As a matter of fact, the current rate study says that we're going to spend point eight million dollars a year on sewer lines. And, and now it looks like we're spending, we're planning on spending a whole lot more than point eight million dollars a year.
Well, when the rate study was done, there was, we had not videoed our sewers, we did not know the extent of our problem, that was just a number that seemed reasonable. But we've actually videoed all our lines now, and we've also had the firm go through and do an assessment of the lines and what needs to be done, which will lead to this work plan. And so, that, I mean, that's the reason for that. The first number was a, I won't call it a placeholder, but it's probably a reasonable estimate, and now we're actually...
Well, if they were doing sleeves, it probably would be enough.
Well, and when you get away from the category fives, we might be in that position, so we can be doing aligners.
One of the things we talked about in one of the infrastructure meetings, was anytime we opened up a road to do any major construction, we would put down conduit for putting in the high-speed internet-type stuff. Is, is there going to be a plan when we open up, I mean, if we're going to, it sounds like we're going to open up a whole lot more streets than we ever intended to from earlier kind of station.
The problem with that is, is we're only opening up a trench for the, to replace the sewer. But, but because we're working on the road, the utilities will be advised, and if there's any utility that wants to jump in when we're doing that work, because we're going to have to come back over to resurface it anyhow, that, we have, we meet every other month with the utility companies, they share with us their projects, we share with them our projects, and when there's that opportunity, that's always presented to the utility companies.
Well, I wasn't actually talking about the utility companies, I was talking about the city, and the city putting in conduit for, I mean, I'm sure you're aware of the fact that, right now, the cost and expense of putting in this high-speed internet is a major problem. a major problem to getting it in.
Well, yeah, but the problem with that is, is any broadband or network should be built as a, as a project, in other words, it's complete, not built in segments, or it's in the ground and absolutely serves no purpose.
If, if we had the money, I agree. Well, what I'm saying is, at one point in time, we talked about doing it in segments, because that's all we could afford, and, and I guess my feeling is, we, we need to go back and, you know, maybe, you know, if we don't have the money to do it right, doing some of it might be better than doing nothing, is all I'm thinking.
Stan, in regards to that, I know the broadband committee is going to come back to the Yorg Committee and make recommendations like that.
Okay. Well, certainly, I mean, this is an opportunity, and if they think it's, it's useful, then we ought to jump on it.
See how we can do it, if we can.
A, okay, now, on the, on the plan, the sewer plant, plan, there was a draft preliminary facility plan out in 2015.
That's correct.
And there was, there was, in the executive summary, there was a statement from P&amp;P, whoever the...
Provost and Pritchard.
Provost, yeah, right, that when they got feedback from the city, they would go through and finalize the preliminary plan.
And that'll actually follow the, the EIR, they'll be bringing the EIR to city council for certification, I believe, in the first, first or second meeting in July, I have a, matter of fact, I have a meeting with Provost and Pritchard on Monday.
Okay. Did the city ever provide feedback on their preliminary plan to Provost and Pritchard?
Well, the city has, yes.
Is, is that available on the website somewhere?
That'll be, well, no, we don't, that's internal through meetings, and that's something that you'll see on their final plan. Our, our comments will be incorporated in their final draft project report.
Oh, okay, and, and then what is the final draft going to be available?
I shouldn't say final draft, it should be final report, but I've noticed most of these consultants, they still use the word draft on their final report, I'm not sure if they believe that removes liability or what, but, but their final report will follow the, the environmental document.
Okay, so the, so we go through the EIR, and then they finalize that, what they're calling a preliminary, I think a draft preliminary plan, and, and then we spend money on a final plan, I mean, a real plan?
No, that's the improvement plans, in other words, those would be the construction plans, what they call PSNE, plant specs and estimate.
Are they...
And that's, we don't have a consultant for that at this particular point in time.
Okay.
They were only brought on to do the preliminary engineering, which is the 30% engineering leading up to the environmental, in order to do an environmental, you have to do 30% preliminary engineering.
Okay, but there was, I mean, they, they asked for city comments to finalize what they were calling their draft preliminary, I mean, whatever that context means, and you say, "We provided them comments", and those are going to be incorporated in what?
That'll be, that'll be incorporated as far as their final project report.
And the final project report will be out when?
I said, "The final project report will follow the, the conclusion, the environmental process".
Oh, okay, and, and how soon after that environmental thing is out, are we going to get an update to that?
Well, well, first of all, the final report's not, following the environmental process, the, the Provost and Pritchard, the city advisor, I think, was her title in the contract for this wastewater project, has to return to the council, and they can return, if, if the council desires, they can go first in the infrastructure, then the council, but there needs to be a determination of citing, where we're going to cite this, because we still have the issue of the, of, with the, with the base, as far as the citing, and that, the particular issue has to do with the, how much water the base wants.
Okay, and hopefully, how much they're going to pay us for it?
Well, that too, but...
Okay, okay, well, I think I have a better understanding of the process, a little anyway. I had sent back some comments back in November of last year, regarding questions and comments to that draft preliminary plan, I think about half of them, I got responses to one way or another, you know, one, here and there and everywhere, but there were still about half of them that I haven't received any feedback on. Am I going to be able to get some feedback on those before that environmental plan and then that final plan?
Now, it's my understanding our consultant has provided responses to all your technical questions, but they said from a, from a policy standpoint, that's, those are decisions that, when they present, when they make their presentation, following the environmental process or review to the council, a lot of those are policy decisions the council has to make.
Oh, I, I totally agree that most of them were policy issues, that actually could have been addressed back when I asked the question, and, and may impact what goes on in the future, so I guess what I would hope is that they, someone would take my question seriously and provide me feedback on the policy issues.
I know that I did, but some of them I couldn't answer, Stan, and so, some of it has to wait until we have more information, at least for, for me, when I read through it.
Yeah, that's possible, then we got to decide, what information do we need to be able to make a decision at a certain time, and I guess I haven't gotten any feedback on, I mean, I could, I could appreciate Provost and Pritchard's concerns, in fact, I was curious why they were asked to respond to them to begin with, but I think there are reasonable questions, and they still need to be responded to. Okay, going on, we are, not we, I guess Walmart is doing a good deal of work on the Bowman Channel, by where the new Walmart is, as well as they've done a lot of refurbishment in the area of the old Walmart, if we can call it that now. Have we somewhere in the budget put money so that we can keep those, wow, makes a difference, doesn't it? So, we can keep those things working and not deteriorate like we have the rest of the Bowman Channel? Is there, is there funding in the, the, the next year's budget to make sure that...
It's my understanding that there is, at this particular time, being negotiated with Walmart, for them to also, as, as they complete this project, to be a part of the drainage maintenance district?
You mean, money-wise, they're going to...
To fund, yes.
They're, they're going to give us money to maintain that?
They're going to be part of that, well, what just came to council, this drainage improvement district that's being created, that they're going to also participate in that.
Wow, that's great. Last question, and I'm sure, once I get the brief, I'll have a lot more, but, but for now, when is the new PMS study going to be available? I've been hearing about it for probably six months, and, and, and I would think, it doesn't take that long to do, at least it hit in the last one.
I don't believe they even started six months ago, I think you probably heard about it, because...
Well, I think it was a discussion that we were going to do, you know, and we're going to authorize the money.
It is being completed, I believe all the fieldwork has been done, so it's, they're basically the, the data and the compilation.
Okay, so, we're talking a month from now, two months from now?
I can get you an answer, I don't have that right now.
Okay, well, yeah, I'm, I'm...
But I would say you're probably, you probably got the right timeframe, I would expect it in the next month or so.
Well, I would, I would encourage you to take that to the infrastructure meeting, when it becomes available, so, so that can be discussed at the infrastructure meeting, as well as announced that it's here and hopefully on the website, when it comes in.
Well, and your, your point's well taken, matter of fact, I meant to comment on it earlier, because we're at a crossroads, because we already have our streets planned based on the last PMS, and with the new PMS, it may, may indicate, you know, a bit of a change in the hierarchy, but...
Yeah, well, I own apartments on a couple streets, so if you'd like to have some input on what would be nice to improve, I can give you a couple streets that would really use them. Thank you.
I've got a couple streets, Stan, I think I have priority over you.
I suspect, I suspect you probably do, yeah, thank you.
Okay, is there any other comments from council?
I'm tired.
Okay.
I've got a big day tomorrow.
Where are we going with this?
Tuesday, we're coming back Tuesday, right?
Okay, if we're coming back Tuesday, I think all the staff reports have been presented, and I think particularly at this time, the, the council probably is in a position then to discuss what they've heard so far, bring up the, if they have any inquiries of staff to ask us again, any questions you may have, discuss it among yourselves, accept more public comments, public input, and then provide direction to staff as to where you want to go, because there's, your, 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 your choices aren't infinite, but we have a, the budget could be accepted as proposed, the budget, you could direct staff to make cuts, you could direct staff where you want to cut, and from who, because we've only got, for any place you want to add dollars to, you're going to have to cut from somebody else's, is what it amounts to, and then there's the idea that we are, this budget is being proposed based on a $800,000 deficit, if you will, in other words, it's $800,000 of expenditures over, over revenues, and if that is something that is not palatable to the council, the council can say, "No, we want, we want to see another $800,000 worth of cuts", I believe that there's no way that won't involve personnel and staff if that were the case, but anyways, those are things that, on, that probably should be discussed on, on Tuesday, in other words, any specific questions you have with staff regarding any of the departments that have presented, any general budget questions you have, and just where you want to go in terms of what's been proposed.
I'd like to make sure we have all copies of what has been presented to us, so we can look at it, in the future, if there's any way you can get them to us beforehand, so, at least we aren't, I don't feel like I've had an opportunity to look at it and understand it, and might be able to ask better questions and learn more, so if there's any way you can get it to us in the future, I realize we're probably not going to do another budget this year, are we? But, things like that. So, if there's no other, then we'll, no other comments or anything else, we'll adjourn? No, we won't adjourn.
Is it 5:00?
5:30.
For Tuesday?
On Tuesday. Yeah. Can we adjourn, does that give us enough time? Okay. Yeah, Tuesday at 5:30 on the 14th. Thanks, everybody, we will adjourn.